It's on?
On.
I call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. It's a regular meeting, May fifteenth at seven oh six PM. On the agenda, first item is approval of agenda. The second item is approval of the minutes for April twenty-seventh, which will have to be tabled. We do not have a quorum from that meeting. Third item is ordinance revisions. There are three items to look at. A proposed repeal and replacement of land use ordinance, section five point nine for landscaping and buffering. Item two is a proposed change to the residential districts R one, R two, and R three. Item three is a proposed addition of section nine point three point two-two for food trucks and food carts.
Put it in order.
Yes. Oh, thank you. And I will do that. I need a roll call, Marty.
Question?
Yes.
Will we approve it? What about, it was not on the agenda, but nine point three four.
Well, we'll talk about it afterwards. Right now, we need to do a roll call so we can.
Yeah, Marty.
Jamie Law.
Roger Moore.
Rich Canong.
Chip Bassett.
Tad Redway, town plan.
Okay. Nine point three four, you said, Marty?
Yeah.
What is nine three four?
Fuel and, it's not in the, it's not in, there's nothing in there about like fuel distribution or anything else.
It's on the, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
It is in the, it is in our to-do list. In fact, it's on the, that big sheet that we've got, the punch list.
We have a.
And if that's the case, how can we act on it?
Act on what?
We can act on the food truck.
No, no.
Nine, nine, nine three four is not on the agenda.
I know, but as my question, I'm trying to ask.
We had a pre-application, we've done a site walk at a facility that is a fuel storage and transfer facility.
Right, right, we're talking about Branch Brook.
Yes.
Right, he's, he hasn't gotten all of his stuff back to us yet, so I don't understand. I, I don't understand the question.
Marty's question is, I take it is a perfectly reasonable one, and how can we consider the application if we don't have regulations?
Because you haven't done any regulations, and until you do, you can't impose them on anybody.
Thank you, I did not understand what Marty was asking. Sorry.
That's why.
And that's it, I just needed that clarified.
Which is why we need to move as quickly as possible in all these performance standards that we have listed as conditional uses, but we don't have any regulations for them.
Okay, so we'll have, we'll have to work on that.
Yes.
And the other item that's on the agenda is the Mylar signing for champagne. And then any other business.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as, as amended.
Any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor?
Yeah.
It's unanimous. First item up. Ordinance revision. The proposed repeal and replacement for the landscape and buffering, section five point nine.
To the chair?
Yes, sir.
We reviewed this back, I think it was two thousand twelve, or it might have been two thousand thirteen. I can't recall offhand. So the question, and this was that document at that time, and just basically taken out of the recycling bin and restored it. And what we want to do is compare this to the existing ordinance, existing five nine, which is landscaping and buffering. And very quickly, what it does is it provides a lot more standards and a lot more specifics on landscaping and buffering than currently is in the ordinance. It does not have the same specifications for individual districts that, that the current one does. All of those specifics should be in the individual districts. We didn't do that when we did the individual districts because we didn't want to repeat ourselves several times. But, in any case, the landscape and buffering is, is basically, deals with design, standards for nursery stock and materials, street trees, and it provides specifications for all these things that we, that we refer to in our ordinance but never have any standards for. Such as planting plans, nursery and stock, standards for planting. I could throw in typical, typical details, planting details and stuff like that if you would like to, and make that a standard thing that we should put into all applications. Always helpful if we have them, but just, we can do that as a side design guideline instead of puffing up the ordinance with more pages. It's up to the board how they want to proceed on that.
I'm confused by something. I thought that screening and buffering were two different things.
Yeah.
Second page at five, effective period, blah, 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 all designated screening buffering. Which, which is it supposed to be?
Screening or buffering.
Yeah.
Should be all designated screening and/or buffering.
I think myself, we've gone overboard. For a perfect example, I'm saying that Leonard Butter turn around, says he doesn't need it when you look at an empty lot next to it, and there's nothing there, and still required to have a screen there. And I thought our primary purpose for businesses or anything else, at least to get them in, not put more demand on potting, to making it look pretty. I remember when it turned around and said, your vegetated buffer, it could be have at least just green grass. Not turn around worrying about where it's going to be, where are you going to plow, or anything else.
Well, I think you'll find that the standards in here don't require any more landscaping that's already required in the zoning ordinance. But it defines things a lot more clearly than it does in the current ordinance. And I think that if you look at it, Marty, we've had a number of different enforcement problems in the last year, and they've all been involved with people who cleared natural buffering and natural landscaping from the site and causing great consternation to the Butters or to the neighbors.
That I understand, sir. But I'm speaking of a case where there was nothing there, and you requested to have something put there. When you're looking at an empty lot, and there's nothing there. Perfect example was champagne, not champagne, but champions.
Well, that was an empty lot, you had residential structures right next to a auto repair facility. Did you not?
Those residencies were up farther, nowhere near where the new building was going to be. And it was, and back there is just a sandlot. And the owner of the other joint property said, no, he didn't need it, didn't want it.
And as I recall, the buffering we put in, that the planning board put in, was, was more virtual than it was actual. Because there are only a few species that you put in, I believe you put in about six trees, in a space of about three hundred foot long.
Not up on the front side, I'm talking on the side property line.
I'm talking about the side front property line too. Because you gave me the responsibility for putting in those six trees.
Yes, but turn around, guess what? They didn't have a choice.
Well, the planning board's got, made that decision.
Planning board was told point blank, we didn't have a decision to make, because that's the way it said it had to be done.
So you want to go in and change the buffering standards for the district? Actually, the buffering standards haven't changed for the district, I recall. Didn't Champion go in before we got the?
Not Champagne, Champion Auto.
I said Champion. Didn't Champion go in before? Didn't they get their approval before we finally approved DB one and two?
No.
I don't recall.
I don't, I don't recall.
Champagne is a whole different.
We're not talking about champagne, Marty, we're talking about Champion.
Okay. No, it was already in. That's when they're splitting lots.
I think all of it's required is ten feet versus the usual thirty, was it thirty, twenty-five in that new, new CCS district. And it also involved parking lots, I think. I figure the issue was really parking lots more than anything else.
But I think, I think really what, I mean what, from a practical standpoint, in that scenario, you, you know, you had an existing business, and albeit it was, you know, a change was proposed, and before the board. You know, I think that's a very different situation than a new business, or new use going in right there next to an, an already developed property. And I'm wondering, is there any kind of provisions we could have for something along those lines? So you don't have to, you know, you don't have to pretend that things were, you know, somebody was looking at a wooded lot or an open field, instead of an, say, an auto repair facility, in that standpoint.
Yeah, I mean, let's take, let's take the concrete.
We did, and I mean, so.
So I'm not sure I understand what the issue is.
Well, you, you, let's say Man Memorial Veterinary Clinic came in, and they said that they wanted to go out the, I don't think they don't like the woods, but just pretend that they, they wanted to do an addition out the back.
Yep.
I read this as saying they, they'd have to have screening, buffering on.
On the swamp site.
On River Road and on Route one. And maybe all the way around the property, where it's wide open right now. And I, I think that's an unnecessary hardship to put on a business. I, I don't know if, I, I pitch that picture specifically because I don't think they can do anything. I, I don't know of any plans for them to do anything. I'm just saying.
But it's a good hypothetical, because everybody's familiar with it, it's wide open.
It's, it's, it's wide open. I, I think it's, it's an undue hardship on a business owner that's got a property like that, has been there. I mean, it, it wasn't there when we moved up here in seventy-seven, I don't think it's newer than that. But, yeah, it's been there for a long time. And if they wanted to add something, if anything had required a conditional use permit from the board, then by understanding as new rules would apply, then that's, I think that's an excessive burden.
Could you show me in here which rule would apply to them, Chip? What standard is burdened, burdened some on Man Memorial?
Well, this, the screening requirement. Although it appears that that is under five point nine point four one, although that does appear to be up to the planning board. I don't know what to, buffering, I don't know how that, how that works. I also don't know how you get to a hundred and forty percent of visual instruction. Interesting concept.
It's overkill.
I think perhaps that should be a hundred percent.
Okay, sure.
Well, I mean, it.
No, no, that's fine.
I think you can move it higher.
So I guess another head scratcher to me, from a practical standpoint, was the fence at Motor Lane. I mean, I know we went through it, I know we approved it, but, you know, are there provisions that would, would be able to, you know, not have, you know, a fence put up adjacent to a, essentially a vacant parcel?
Do you remember why that had to happen?
Oh, they, they did it on their own when they moved their property line. Is that what you're, where you were going?
Yeah, that's what it was. I mean, that was, that was a, they put the fence up because they would have had to cut the parking lot.
They would have, and so.
Because the parking lot couldn't be more than, the parking lot couldn't be more than twenty, could not be less than twenty-five feet from the adjacent property line. And rather than.
So that was the.
So they would have had to move, they would have had to cut twenty-five feet out of the park, out of the existing parking area.
Which they didn't want to do.
Or you're coming to come, or you're being in compliance with the zoning laws. So they said, is there anything else we can do? And there is that small provision that's in, in the BI district that allows you to put up a fence in lieu of that, that twenty-five foot, you know.
So that's good, I mean, at least, as long as there was an option there.
Yeah, and their option was pull it out, you know, cut the parking lot. And the thing was, they were, at the time, they were talking about buying the second parcel from, from Craig Griffith.
Yeah.
And they just didn't have the money to do it. And they said, well, you can cut the parking lot, or if you put this up, this will preserve the parking lot for some future day when you do have the money to buy the rest of it.
Right, right.
So that's what that situation was. I, I don't think you can lay down on the doorstep of landscaping, you can lay down on the doorstep of setback for a parking lot that we have before.
Okay.
And that's in the BI district.
Okay, well, specific to my hypothetical.
Yeah.
All of five point nine point five parking lot landscaping would apply.
All of it would be applied, okay. Apply, you mean being excessive?
Yes.
Okay, always there.
If, if they needed to get a new conditional use permit or something, they're doing to their, to their building. The way I'm reading this, they have to have screening of the parking lot. And buffering, and street trees.
Well, the buffering has to be from residential property, right? That's what it's really referring to.
I don't think, it doesn't, it doesn't say that.
Well, then let's change it.
And I, I would agree. I, I find myself in a strange position of agreeing with Marty on this. From a business point of view, I don't care if the business right next door can see it. If it's a residential business, if it's a residential neighborhood, or the businesses are pitting up against the residents, then I can agree that it should be buffered. But if it's a, if you're, I'll use Weir's Motors, because, just because they're so huge. But they've got businesses all the way around them, except on the backside. I don't care if there's no lands, if there's no buffering between them and Arundel Ford, or them and whatever that other conglomeration of businesses happens to be.
Or plantings, or plantings along Route one there. I mean, what good does that do? They still got to turn around and, still got to move the stall and everything else.
I, I don't, I don't have a problem with saying you've got to do something on Route one so that it, you don't run right up to the road. I don't have a problem with that. I do have a problem looking at it and saying, because if we took this to its extreme, whoever moves into where the doctor is at Branch Brook, is going to have to buffer his business from Branch Brook. That makes sense.
Why would you do that?
If they were to do something.
Because it says you have, if they want to do something, if they want to make a change, this says you have to do that. You have to screen it in or buffer it.
DB one and DB two, you're looking at standards, basic general standards. You got to look for the specifics in the districts. This is a general standard. You'll need to look at the specifics in the individual districts, do you not? So let's look at DB one and two. Let's see what they say. You'll find in DB one and two, they said between businesses, you have a ten-foot strip, that's it. I believe that's what it says. And then in cases where you do have coordinated parking, you don't need to have any landscaping.
You're right, we don't. And it does say that. But that, but that, to me, that raises the issue, if that's the case in the business districts, and it's, we've already defined it in the business districts, do we need to define it in the general standards?
Yeah, because you don't have any of these standards in the general standards.
Well, here's another perfect one.
You don't have, look, you don't, it doesn't talk about nursery stock, doesn't talk about the type of material you put in, doesn't talk about any of that stuff. In fact, I think I even loosened up something where the current ordinance says that you can't have bark mulch. Bark mulch will not consider landscaping component.
But please to start fire.
Yeah. Well, here's, here's another one, where between the daycare and the other one, when he came in to change things around on Route one, you had to turn around and have landscaping in between the properties. It's been like that for years.
He was putting in a new, a new business, if you recall.
A new business, but the.
He was happy with it. He was doing expansion of an existing business, he was changing a residential property into a business property, if you recall. That's why he was being forced for the conditional use, because he was converting a residential home into a business office. And then he was expanding a garage into a showroom and a, and a workplace.
But the garage was already there.
Exist.
Which existing, which was an all body shop.
And he was putting, he was putting landscaping in along the, along where the public parking was. If you recall, it was a set of Rosa Regosas, and one layer of them, if you recall. Was not a huge amount of work in there, and he actually liked the idea. And staff designed it for him. It's not like there was a huge burden that was placed on that.
But the other thing is, here along your landscaping, you have to have trees now, or anything else on Route one or anything.
You still have, you've always had that tree.
No, you have not.
Yeah, it's in the ordinance.
I'm telling you, you're telling me we always had to have it, no, we didn't.
Marty, why have we had street trees in every single project on Route one or Route one eleven that we've had? Everything from, from our friends Lisa True, Mark and Lucy Lisa True, they had to put in street trees, if you recall. One of the issues, we've had them multiple places. And it's in the ordinance, it's in your existing ordinance.
It wasn't always there.
Well, no.
That's what I'm trying to tell you.
There weren't white people in this country either, but I mean, there was.
Yeah, a long time there has been.
You actually didn't have trees. This is not new stuff. This is what you have existing right now. Shall we go through and find those sections of the ordinance?
Well, give you an example. You're making a business owner turn around and put street trees up, where the town won't even bother to turn around and help the business by putting any lighting up along Route one. You want to turn around and put a burden on them that way, but turn around, they won't even light up the dark hole.
Marty, you know.
You asked me, and you knew it was coming. You know, you've heard me voice this before.
What's your point, Chip?
Okay, in, in section five point nine three, five point nine landscaping and buffering, five point nine three addresses buffering of non-residential uses. So that, that appears to, in much more condensed way. So I guess I'm trying to figure out, is this, this is a replacement of five point nine, the existing five point nine point three?
Yes.
Yes.
Of, of all the five point nine.
Of all the five point nine. Okay, well, this, this new language doesn't, doesn't, I like what we already have a whole lot better than like this.
Well, the thing that I like about this, in the new ordinance, is five nine one. All new construction of non-residential and multifamily residential, requiring plenary site plan review or a conditional use permit are subject to the following performance standards, except as otherwise specified in the zoning district. And it's something that I had missed the first time around. I like the, it applies to non-residential and multifamily.
Yeah.
Which is something that, that, the current ordinance does not.
Okay, but it, but it, but it does not. It doesn't make a distinction between the situation where you have businesses next to each other, and you have a res, a business district ordering on a residential district. I'm entirely in favor of screening and buffering residences. But to me, forcing screening and buffering on commercial properties in, in, in DB one, or BI one, or whatever it's called, doesn't, it just, I don't understand why.
Can we go to DB one? You have the, yeah, the ordinance right there. Let's go to DB one, and take a look at it, at what the buffering standards are in DB one.
Which one is?
What page is it on?
Uh, I think it's six, it should be six four, I think.
I think so, yeah. DB one, six four, on page seventy-six. So the landscaping is on, landscaping is on page eighty-two. Six four eight. See, it doesn't talk about buffering. Or, or screening. It didn't there.
Street trees.
Yep. So when we look at this, the applicable section of this would be, the new ordinance would be five nine four.
And while you're in, while you're in six four, also look at the parking lot. Look what the standards are for the parking lot.
Off-street parking.
In, in six four.
Yep, that's on page eighty-one.
No, eighty-two.
Oh, oh, sorry, you're right. I don't, no, I don't have anything on.
No.
I don't have anything on parking lots. The only thing I have is off-street parking and loading requirements.
Page eighty-two, you don't have this? Parking lot, planting strips. And there's, in, in the landscaping, there's.
Yep, in the landscaping, I see.
There's parking lots, planting strips.
In other areas beside the front yard, five-foot planting strips up there five trees behind. I remember going through that.
The argument was make suggestive, or to suggest boundaries, but not to create buffers. Even if it's a residential property in the DB one. And the DB two, it's been pointed out to us numerous times that our standard, landscaping standards are actually not tough enough along the residential border with a, with a, with a residential district. That came out when we did lot three, if you recall. It also came out when we did Atlantic Storage. And actually in Benton's as well, where there was some discussion about being able to put up a fifty-foot tall building right along the border, and there wasn't adequate, there wasn't enough landscaping to make it not visible from the residential properties there. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, perhaps this thing needs to be recrafted a little better, but it, it refers, it's supposed to pretty much defer to the individual sections, where the standards for landscaping in individual sections apply.
And that's noted right in five nine one?
Yep. In, in the new ordinance, it is.
Right, in the proposed, right.
Yeah, the, the existing one doesn't like that. It also extends agricultural uses.
So, so let me ask a question about that real quick, since you brought it up. Is, you, you have in parentheses, accepting mineral extraction. Aren't they two different types of, of legal uses?
They are two types of different, of legal uses.
So why, why connotate that mineral extraction is a agricultural use?
I think the only reason I put that in originally was because, as you know, in many farms, you're allowed to have your own gravel pit or mineral extraction area as part of the farm.
Okay, that's-
And many communities say that's an accessory use. They have your own gravel pit for your farm, it's an accessory use for a farm.
Is that, is that, if it's a, of insufficient size, does that go unregulated by the ordinance?
Yeah. It does.
So that pond had Phil Abbeys. Which is a gravel pit.
Right, but that doesn't, no, here's agricultural, there's a pond down there?
Oh, yeah, yeah. There's a pond, and there's, and there's, there's a-
That's just where I'm going.
There's, there's, there's water-
And he owns the property.
Flowing from an area, a wooded area with standing water in it across the road, but it's not a stream, because Paul Gatway says it's not.
Okay. All right. Go on, I'm, I'm-
There, there was, there was a, there was a graph, there was a pond that was a, we were told was not a wetland, because it was just a gravel pit and collected water.
We are definitely not sure what a pond is.
I don't know, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get sidetracked.
It was there before the ordinance.
It doesn't matter.
Well, I'm just having a-
Grand pond.
It was there back in the seventies.
Most ponds were there before the ordinance too, they were usually created about ten thousand years ago.
We discussed this a little bit when, when the Drews put in Surf Brook, because if that thing ever gives way, they're gonna get washed away.
Yes.
It's gonna go right down over the back, back of that hill.
But Paul also said that the watershed was, that the watershed was too small to be of any impact to the culverts and downstream.
Well, this was fault after all.
Okay, I'm sorry, getting back to this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm- Do you want me to correlate this with the ordinance, so you guys have a better idea of how this fits with the ordinance's, with, with the individual sections, so that, that, um, you feel comfortable that this is not mandating something that isn't in the other sections?
Yes, please.
Yeah. I think I need to do that, because you guys aren't, you're concerned, you're expressing concerns, which means it's not clear enough.
We're not happy.
That were, that it, that it defers to the individual sections.
Right, I mean-
It needs to do that, it needs to do that a little more clearly.
Okay, so I did, I mean, I'm doing a quick scan of DB one.
Yeah.
And nowhere in the five point, six point, five point seven landscaping of the DB one do I see, oh, maybe it's DB two.
I think it's-
I think it's DB two.
I don't see any reference to the word screening or buffering.
Yep. That would include parking lots? Did you, did you look at the parking?
Yeah.
That includes parking lots too, right?
Right.
Well, no, because it, it says that, plantings for all other parking in the DB two shall conform to the standards of section five nine and five twelve.
Right.
Five twelve.
Well, if we wanna go through, yeah, five twelve.
That's all three, parking lot designs criteria.
Right, okay. Yeah, we may have to make a few changes to some of these things if we redo five nine, because if we change five nine, we may have to make some changes. I mean, the intent is, we don't want to keep going back and forth, right?
Right, right.
Right, that's really what we're gonna do. So I'd like to get rid of that, and if there's more standards, if we need to be more specific to the standards in the DB two, then we should do that as part of this thing.
Um, can, can I ask a question? What, what if we, instead of having these general standards in one place, and then separate standards for each district? What if we just have standards in each district?
You mean landscape standards for all the districts in one place, to kind of what we got now?
No, no. I'm, I'm suggesting it be landscape standards for each district.
Right, so in six four, there would be landscape standards for DB one. In six five, there would be landscape, and we would not have general landscape standards.
The only thing I would say about the general landscape standards would be, um, this, these, these specifications, the stock, the plantings, the, you know, the minimum standards for this nursery stock, minimum standards for planting plan, things like that.
But those can all be put into, you don't wanna put this in every, in everything.
I, 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 I agree with Ted on, as far as that goes, yes. But I, I, I think,
Okay.
I think five nine one, five nine two, five nine three, fine, that, that's general.
Yep.
You know, the, each, each section should refer to that. I don't know if we need to, maybe, let me, let me take a different approach to this.
Sure.
But five point nine point four screening and buffering, it seems to me that that needs to be, the, the screening, buffering requirements should be specific to each district. Does that make sense?
It does. And I, I would think the, the parking lot-
And the parking lot absolutely could be
Right.
Specific to each district.
But other than that, I mean, the street trees and the, and the other specifications could all be
In the general.
In the general.
And, and I, I, on the parking lot landscaping, I, I, I still think if, if you have an existing business, and they, they need to come in for a permit because they're adding two garage bays, or they're, you know, whatever it is, I think it's a real hardship to put on them, to, to make them comply. Put it a different way, I, I think there's a difference between a, a new business coming into a wooded lot and, and an existing business that has an existing parking lot, because these, these standards could, could cut out ten, twenty parking spaces from somebody who may not have room between their building and the road to meet minimum parking spaces because of this landscaping stuff. I, I, I think that's a lot of the hardship.
Also Chip, along that line, for plowin'. That's, notice they give you a, you know, you got all, you got all these islands, this, that, and everything else. It did, you know, we live in Maine, we aren't down south.
Well, whoever came up with the parking road furniture in downtown Kennybunk needs to be shot.
That was probably a town planner, town planner and some glorified engineer.
No, it'd be a landscape architect, that's what you have, I can't, yeah, it's a landscape architect and a town planner.
They say nothing of that glorious runabout.
Oh, yeah.
But, okay.
That's another white dream of DOT.
Do you understand what we're looking for?
I know what you're looking for.
Okay.
I think, uh, some of the stuff from parking lot may, may stay in general, but I think in, in general, we should address probably the issue of giving the planning board authority, especially with existing uses, I mean, very honestly, the staff review committee approved four new parking spaces that man, Moneo Konek can do not require any landscaping.
But we would've.
I don't know, would you have?
I didn't.
I said we would've, because it's in the ordinance.
No, but the ordinance was on certain flexibilities.
Right.
Because I didn't, I was adjacent to anything, and it wasn't facing the street.
Okay. So let's go to
Okay, great.
The next item on the list.
Keep that one up.
The next item, changes to the residential district, R one, R two, and R three. I will look at just- You object? I was gonna say, I wanted to look at, first off, just the R one, and confine our discussion to the R one. But if you want to object, that's okay too.
What do you object to, Chip?
Uh, we'll get to it.
We'll get to it.
Okay, okay.
You're just the math.
Does that mean Rich is like the judge or your opposing attorney?
I don't know.
I don't know, because we all have opinions, remember what opinions are.
If you look at the R one district, and read through the information that Ted gave, this is it. R one is supposed to be, according to the complaint, is supposed to be a, a highly developed residential neighborhood?
Urban.
Highly, high, high-density residential neighborhood.
Even though they, they didn't, they wanted to stop calling it urban, it is urban.
It is?
It's one acre zoning, which is the densest zoning we've got in town, aside from what we put in the DB one and two districts. And, uh, and the, uh, well, you can read it for yourself, I can read it. I think I gave you the excerpts from the Arundel plan.
I, I need a, I need a map.
What do you mean?
No landscaping in there either?
The R one is, is along Limerick Road primarily.
It, does it run from Route One north or west or whatever?
It goes northwest, it goes northwest all the way up to the highway.
Right.
And then it's R two on the other side of the highway, starting at the school.
Okay.
Isn't there somewhere what?
And then it also goes down campground, up Campground Road.
Yep.
So it goes Campground Road to the DB two and DB one districts.
And there's none of it on the new road?
Uh, and then there's, then there's the new, new road.
Yeah.
All of the new road, and all clear work, uh, clear, clear view acres.
Okay.
That whole area in there, that's all R one, it's all-
Also Liberty Acres in there?
Liberty Acres area as well.
Yeah, too. However, um, Hisson's Development and development flanking on either side or not, they are all R two. Those are two acres, you remember the Alvin property on Old Alfred Road that we converted to an R one district? That's the boundary near U. J.
Yep.
So.
Okay, I, 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 I do object, because the, the section of on the west or southwest side of Limerick Road from Route One, frankly, just about all the way, sure doesn't look like urban or even semi-urban to me, it looks a whole lot more, I, I, let me put it to you a different way, I don't understand why that would be zoned any differently than my property.
You won't get an argument from me on that.
I mean, that's-
That, it, that just happens to be what, for whatever reason, and I don't know, it was before I came on the planning board, so it was at least a decade ago, they made that an R one district. It, I don't think it could support that kind of development that the comp plan says it should.
It's not even a question of supporting it, it's just that, that, that's not what's there, it's bigger properties, they're farms. I, I, I don't get it.
Who has control over that, Ted?
The townspeople of Town of Arundel.
Okay, so we could, we could go and vote and say, this is not an R one district.
First, gonna have to change the comp plan.
What's the issue?
No, the comp plan is a guide, it's not law.
That's right.
If you remember, we were very close to finishing up the DB one, and when somebody who used to be a vice chairman of the planning board had said, no, we gotta go to the comp plan first. Remember that?
Yeah, just because Hudson and White were-
No, it wasn't him. Um, it, you know, actually, Dan, Dan DeBois brought it up, saying technically, and he is correct, technically, um, for a large zones to be changed, you gotta change the comp plan, or you should change it. It doesn't, and you, you're right, it doesn't necessarily mean that the planning board can't recommend recommendations or make changes to the comp plan, but for it to really be legitimate, for us to have our zoning ordinance in, in sync with the comprehensive plan, it should be in sync, is what I'm saying. One should follow the other, theoretically, I understand this is, this is, this is all linear. The comp plan is supposed to come up with a big picture idea of how the town wants it developed. The zoning ordinance, what the planning board does in doing a zoning ordinance is the implementation of the big picture concept. And then, so if we wanna do some big picture changes, then we have to change the comp plan, and we should change the comp plan. Right now, there's no penalty for doing that, because the state, there is no office of comprehensive planning anymore, and state planning offices has been destroyed, and it's been, it's been eradicated, it's been folded, its functions folded in agriculture, now, if there's a new political change, and there's a new administration, then they might reinstate the state planning office, and then we might find ourselves in a situation where, in order to have zoning, we have to be in compliance with the comp plan, and we have to get the room, which we used to have to do.
Let me ask you this question. They take care of the big picture, so they, they look at it, the comprehensive plan, and the comprehensive committee looks at it and says, we should have R one, we should have R two, R three, R four, we should have business districts. Is it not then up to the planning board as to where they should be?
No.
Because we're not talking about a big picture, we're talking about creating a specific area, such as the DB one, that says this is where we think that would best fit for businesses, this is where we think would best fit for an R one district.
Okay.
And those are the recommendations you can make, and the recommendations you did make, and in fact, it was the planning board that drove the recent changes in the business districts.
No, it wasn't the planning board.
Yes, it was the planning board, because the planning board had come up with these, these concepts before the comp plan ever did. The comp plan committee was formed in, in response to the planning board promoting DB one, the DB two, ARD districts, and those districts, and the reason why the planning board was doing that was they were trying to meet the comp plan.
Yeah, but turn, the comp plan has dictated to us what we can do and where we can't do. We've tried to fight about it, and we've been told point blank, you have to follow the comp plan. As an example, when the, the comp plan came up with the wet dream of the, the big district, they gave us the business district of six hundred some odd, whatever it was, when they were gonna expand it, but that's nothing but swamp and ledge.
To be fair, Marty, half of Arundel's swamp and ledge.
Yeah, but guess what, the business district is even worse. And then that was the big thing they were giving, supposedly to the business district.
Well.
And then when, when somebody walked that whole thing and found out what it actually was, rock and ledge.
Of course, we have to recognize our most successful business right now is in that rock and ledge.
The only reason that is there because-
Of which we gave away three quarters of revenue for twenty-five years?
No, yeah. Well, anyway, you stick, you know, we, we stick to the issue of what is on residential district one that we proposed in two thousand and fifteen. And if I could answer Chip's question, what the heck the R one is doing there?
Yeah.
Especially the lower portion, you're talking about between Route One and, uh, camp, campground. Actually, Route One and the, and the Turnpike is-
No, well, let's go, let's back it up a little farther.
No, no, let's, let's, let Ted address the Chip's question.
To answer that question, why was that designated as a high-density district? It's because the state had, the state basically, um, was pushing, okay. This goes back to the Angus days, and also to the state planning office, uh, which was really pushing for consolidation of land use, to actually focus on infill in existing neighborhoods and existing communities, whether it was existing development, or the potential for existing development was going to go. Rather than creating sprawl, which we were spreading out all over the county, the intent was to create, was to either entice or to force, depending on what mechanism towns could use, development into tighter clusters around urban centers. Urban being any kind of development center, whether it's, in Arundel, it was around the Route One area, or in proximity to the Route One area, uh, or in other towns, it would be around their, their historic community center, and then work your way out. So the growth areas would be in the, in the center, or in near where you have existing development, and, or you have a potential for existing development, and then that would, it would work out from, from there. So you have these growth areas, that's with the map you saw in there, the growth area, the area where the, the town should be focusing, putting their higher-density developments in. And it was, it really focuses around Route One, and the fact that the Town of Arundel historically is considered Limerick Road to be its main street. There's a portion of the town that believes that- There's a portion of the town that believes that Limerick Road is its main street.
What portion of the town?
What town? What part of that?
This town.
Route 1 has always been...
But there, there are those who believe that Route 1 is a state road and Limerick Road is really a Arundel's road. It's a Arundel's...
Okay, well, Limerick Road and River Road are the same road.
Yep.
So I wanna know why R1 doesn't run all the way down to Kennybunkport.
Because the objective was to keep it clustered around Route 1. The reason why...
Well, I, I, I'm no further from, I'm closer to Route 1 than half of this.
I don't know what to tell you. I didn't...
I, I, I know what the answer is, but...
But I'll tell you, part of it is, first of all, it wasn't based on carrying capacity of the land. We know that. It should be based on carrying capacity of the land. You could make an argument, it does need the carrying capacity of the land if we ever get sewer. Because then we're much closer to sewer along Route 1 and much of R1, we could be potentially sewered at some future date.
There's plenty of water on River Road.
Yeah, and there's no water on Limerick Road. There's water, oh yeah, but that's way down in Kennebunk. Water's down in, on River Road in Kennebunk.
It runs from My Barn all the way down to, uh, Gosnell Brook.
Right.
Supposed to be carried over to the other side of the golf course. There's supposed to be a hydrant there.
There is a hydrant there.
Across the bridge?
There's, if you've got city water...
And if you recall, one of the things Town House District does is it allows you to have dens, greater density if you have, if you have, uh, public water.
Yeah, I, I don't recall that. I, I just, I'm...
But, you know, the fundamental question of asking why your plan is R4 and why Limerick Road is R1, it's because the comprehensive planners felt that the growth should be focused on Limerick Road and not down in your area. That's essentially what, that's what it means.
I, I understand.
That goes back to Flashberry time.
I'm going to, I'm going to get on the soapbox for a moment.
Okay.
I, I, I just, ignoring the fact that some of the property I'm thinking of belongs to me. But the, the closer you get to Kennybunkport, the more expensive the houses are going to be. They get built and the more likely they are to have older people who don't have school-aged children. So if one of our objectives is to have limited residential development, which adds to the tax base with less financial burden on the county, 55% of our budget being school board, then what we really ought to be going for is board development closer to notion. And the, the, I, I haven't lived here all my life, but I've been here all my life. And Limerick Road was just a way to get to Benneford when you needed to, that way. There, there wasn't any social significance to Limerick Road.
I had the town hall and the school on it. I could say that was enough for the town center.
I would agree with you, Chip.
I, 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 I recognize that, 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 that the comprehensive plan has to be changed or something has to be voted on at town meeting. I do think town meeting can trump the comprehensive plan.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, and, and can and possibly should, despite the chairperson's statement that our job is to junk however, how I should tell these two.
Yeah, that's gonna happen.
Uh, we've done it before, but, well, I, I, I understand that, but I, I just, I guess what I'm... I, I'm not clear on, on exactly what we're trying to, um... What, what are we being asked to do here?
Um, if, if you read the, um, the revised section of the R1 district functions, what you're being asked to do is to continue the R1 in its current, um, dimensional standards from the standpoint of its density, one-acre zoning. Um, so that hasn't changed. There's, I wanna see more interesting non-residential development in there. Um, but nothing that would be actually supportive of a, of a, of dense residential development. Um, meaning no, no small commercial, you know, neighborhood commercial stuff. But then what they do say is that on larger lots that should be allowed, limited agriculture and animal husbandry and equestrian and a couple other land uses that are not, that are difficult in the, you know, high-density residential district. And that because one of the things that they wanna do in terms of increasing density in those areas and encouraging the kind of density that R1 is supposed to attract, which would be higher density, that we would, we would entice certain kinds of, um, development that could work better with a cluster kind of form of, of, of settlement pattern. And, you know, that cluster would be, as we've talked before, age-restricted housing, congregant care, um, shared or, you know, multifamily housing with, you know, interspersed with business, that kind of thing.
Okay.
That's what, that's basically, if you notice in there, you'll find that in the text, the development uses.
Ted, we're, we're talking about Arundel.
Well, remember, this is a 10-year plan.
Oh, I've, I've seen the 10-year plan. I have nothing to come about 10-year plan. Except more rules and regulations.
Well, I think things are actually starting to heat up. We're seeing some significant development coming this direction. And, um, I think we've got some game changers in the town, including the seasonal cottages. And some more developments that are coming. We have our first, you know, age-restricted community that's going out along Cabin Road. And I think we are seeing some changes that are occurring to Arundel. Arundel is suburbanizing. It is not a rural community anymore.
It is, is, is Log Cabin Road R1?
Yeah. Log Cabin, Log Cabin Road is...
R2.
And R3. A portion of it's R3 too. And then there's, at the very end, as you know, that it's R4. As it gets towards Kennebunkport.
Now, no sense.
A question for you.
I remember, I remember when we talked about this being a little bit surprised to see the R4 down, as much of an extent down in that part of, of town.
It was Stacy Wentworth specifically...
Yes.
Doing something to my father. That is exactly what it was. Because when they created R4, my father owned over 60% of the undeveloped land that was in Henry. And now I own it.
Now, a question also to ask, with this R1, if this is supposed to be all residential, is this anything that we're trying to slush through or anything else by the comprehensive plan? So that, to entice even more of the Eastern Trail and then the new town hall? Because that's, they're, they're not even, the town's not even following through about development in residential zoning.
I, I just, I, I'm sorry. When, when you were talking about Arundel and you're talking about pedestrian-oriented connections, I, 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 I've just got a disconnect here. This is nonsense.
Do you know what that term actually defines?
But don't forget your streets and sidewalks.
Sidewalks.
Yeah.
I know exactly what it means.
And I'll tell you right now, the Highway Commissioner does not want a sidewalk in town.
It's the same thing with your street trees along Route 1.
I'm extremely aware of Mr. Teschera's opinion on that.
Guys, look, let, let's remember one thing. I, you know, I do have, I do have to, to remind the board that the complaint is looking 10 years down the line, 20 years down the line. And if you are gonna put in some of these developments that are high-density developments and they do come in, you are going to need to come up with these kind of facilities. It's that simple. The demand will be there and you need to provide for it now. You're only gonna provide it as the developments come in or as the new roads to these developments come in. It's not like we're gonna be laying sidewalks through the, through the woods. You know, it's going to be accompanied with these developments. But the concept that you're gonna have large pond or rost kind of subdivisions in a one-acre zoning where you're offering density bonuses, where people are gonna have half-acre lots for you to sit there and say, this is rural, we don't need pedestrian facilities, is, is, is dying your head in the sand. That's an urban environment. Half-acre lots are Portland.
Why not?
Downtown Kennebunk. You'll find quarter-acre lots.
Why do we even want that?
Well, apparently you do, 'cause it's in there.
That's what the complaint...
Well, it's not unreasonable, but the question is, is that what you want? From a fiscal standpoint, is that what you want?
Well, hey, 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 if you're pulling... That's part of my point is, if, 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 if the, the, the kind of development that you're talking about are starter homes and, and, and homes for younger families...
Yeah.
That, you know, that, that's what puts the biggest burden on the, on, on the budget and the other taxpayers in town.
Agreed. I think one of the things that the complaint committee, to their credit, said was the kind of development they wanted to see in there was not the starter home, but the age-restricted and the congregant care kind of facilities that are more geared towards, and, and small apartments that are geared more towards elderly or empty nesters or single people and not towards families. Families want the two-acre lot with the backyard. As, as Marty calls them, the homey, Harvey homeowner wants a little bit of land. The kind of development here, and remember, we still have a requirement that you have to cluster. In a one-acre zone, we have to cluster. So that's why we're going down to smaller and smaller lots. Right, they're speaking on land that's not capable in many cases of supporting it because it's high water table, you know?
Like Jay Brothers?
Jay Brothers was one that, yeah, well, they, they, that was a clustered development. And that was on land that was, at least was halfway suitable. It's, it's a lot worse in cer, certain sections of the R1 district.
But where the new town hall is going, that, that, that's, I mean, uh, you tell me how the new town hall, where they wanna put it, fits in the R1 qualifications? Because they're just, just because they say they're municipal and they can do whatever they want.
That's exactly why it fits in there, Marty.
Right.
In every zone.
They can do whatever they want 'cause they said they could.
Well, um, that's, that is where the, the selectmen feel that it's most appropriate, put that facility.
Yeah, but guess what? They speed just as fast up, or faster on the old Limerick Road than Route 1.
Maybe, maybe it'll get voted down at the town meeting. Have to wait and see what happens.
Right. But I'm just trying to explain why, why these things, I mean, these aren't unreasonable things to do if you're gonna have a high-density zone.
See, I, I think some of them are unreasonable.
Which ones?
When, when, when you look at, at the uses that, that the complaint is talking about. Permitted non-residential uses, including co, community and government uses, non-commercial recreational facilities, home occupations, businesses, okay, fine. Age-restricted housing, okay. Congregate care facilities and small-scale agricultural and natural resource uses, animal husbandry, equestrian facilities, agritourism.
What is that?
That's a good question.
I suck it up to the public.
No, wait a minute. Chip, that's you. Tourists come to look at your agriculture, right?
Yeah, but they don't pay anything.
Well, that's because you're, you're in that one box outside with a collector.
But that's another part that I picked up on when we looked at this before is that we've got a lot of larger parcels within the R1. It's, it's not just encompassed to what we think, what we're thinking of as, as one to two-acre lots.
That, that's, that's what I have, it's, it's... I, I guess I just have a, a fundamental problem with the idea of one-acre lots with cluster housing. It, it, I mean, but, but why do we want that?
Because the teacups are next to each other, so you can fill them.
So that we feel like we're in New Jersey again?
I think we, and we've talked about this in the past, Chip, and I don't remember if it's while you're on the board or not, of, of relaxing the cluster standards for the one acre. And, and did we talk about it with the two acre, Ted, or was it...
We talked it across the board, but the board decided after, after a lot of consideration, we'll leave it in place the way it was.
Because that's what the...
Because I mean, I think the, I think to...
That was the board's decision.
To, to get rid of the cluster in a one acre is, is very broken.
That's something I think this board can really look at and say, where do we want the cluster? I mean, the, the purpose of having cluster zoning is to preserve open space and create and preserve, preserve the sense of a rural environment. But if you're going to have high density, it's, I don't care how you're going to, it's gonna be real tough to, to get that kind of, of... It, it's gonna be tough to, to cluster it and get that sense of elbow room in a high-density neighborhood.
And it's tough to do it from a practical standpoint unless we get water and sewer, or, you know, until we...
And that, that's my, and it's always been my greatest concern, 'cause if I just, I, I, I pop up the soils now and I show you how many non-burden soils are in that whole district, you know, you choke on your, on your cucumbers.
Yeah.
We, we've got public water and sewer, you, you, all right, throw half-acre lots in and, and run with it. But until then, we, we really don't have that demand.
No. And, but if we do get sewer, then we'll get pressure to have that sewer extended up Limerick Road. That's nice. I mean, I, I, I talked to somebody today who was looking at a, at the Schwecker property.
Which one is that?
Schwecker property is a large white farmhouse that, that the Schwecker...
The old horse farm.
There we go. Marty's got it. The old horse farm on Limerick Road. It's on the right-hand side as you're going towards town hall from...
Before you get to Cowgill's.
Another one you're meeting?
Before you get to Birch.
Yeah. And it's the one where we've, where they, it was about 78 acres altogether. It backs up against Atlantic storage.
Yes.
And they have a big, uh, a big house, big railing house and big beautiful barn. And they were just looking at, well, how can we, uh, how can we put high-intensity subdivision in there? That's what they were looking for. And so I sat down and had a meeting with them about it. That's what they're looking to do. Because the zone is conducive for, and quite frankly, on that side of the road, you got some adamant soils out there. Jamie knows that's, that's gravel, which means it's suitable for septic systems for, it's actually almost too, it's almost too droughty, almost too porous. But, um, that's a potential use there. Actually, I'd rather see that as an event. Facility there where you have weddings and stuff for that kind of facility. But, you know, that's beside the point. The fact is that this is what the complaint has given us as a deal, and, and I think Jamie might be right. Recognizing that one-acre zoning is in an area where we have, on one side of the road, we have some gluten soils. On the other side of the road, we've got really marginal stuff. That perhaps we wanna, might look at changing our clustering provisions or make it, make it zone-specific and not just make it across the board. That's something we could do. The other thing is, say, no, we don't want these facilities. We wanna just keep it one-acre zoning. Thank you very much, Comprehensive Plan Committee, but we don't accept these provisions. I'm not sure that that's necessarily in our best interest. But, um, we also, as Chip has pointed out and Jamie pointed out, we do have some large parcels in there. They're conducive for somebody to buy and turn it into a big subdivision.
A really big subdivision.
Really big subdivision.
And, and if somebody, if somebody wants to buy it and turn it into a big subdivision, go ahead and do it without using clusters.
Like fire, like fire.
That's one thing we, we, you know, we want. That's something that they didn't talk about in the R1. They talked about it in the R2, and that's, um, that's something that will come up. And that's the issue of allowing a variance from the cluster subdivision if you do subdivisions of 10 acres or more.
Yeah, which, which I, I want to amend to five acres personally.
But that's, that's a discussion we have.
I, I, that's a totally different discussion, I realize.
I, 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 I have a problem with some of the uses that the complaint thinks should be in there.
Well, then, let, let me know which one... Well, then, let me know which ones you think are inappropriate, so I.
Equestrian facilities, animal husbandry, and congregant care facilities. You didn't put a congregant care facility in an R1 zone. I'm gonna put a thirty bed nursing home in an R1 zone. Really? That makes no sense to me.
Congregate care facility is actually becoming a sort of a extinct creature. It was pretty big for a while, but it seems to be dissipating in popularity. Congregate care is not, it's a progressive nursing home, let's put it that way.
It's more along the lines of the Adria or Huntington Commons.
It's exactly what it is.
But they're saying.
You progress from cottage to, you know, when you get so debilitated, you have to be in a hospital setting.
Think Seal Rock over in South.
And animal and equestrian facilities.
And the thing is, those don't grow in trees. It's not like they're putting it around every corner. I mean, if you get one, you'd be lucky. Kennybunk's got, what, three, four?
Four.
And why contractors' yards? We're talking, if we're talking about clustered development, one acre lots, a contractor yard does not belong here.
Well, the only, the only thing I would say for the contractor yard would be for, be it an existing business that happens to be in the R1, that would have that potential to go that route.
I agree completely that somebody should be grandfathered in R4.
And we've successfully done that, if you recall. That's our attorney's advice. We've said any use that exists is a permitted use, that use there is permitted use.
Yeah, I feel strongly about not putting burdens, potential burdens, whether it's buffering or whatever, on existent facilities.
But I think, and I think the struggle that we're having, it all boils right down to the anomaly of where we've got our R1 districts. They're not in, you know, they're not in what you would think of as a tight, you know, urban or quasi-urban area. You know, even a tight suburban area.
I look at R1, I think from the Turnpike down to 111 is an R1 district there. You go down, you go down the other side of the road, there are houses every couple hundred feet, all the way down through, until you get to Clearview Estates.
Right.
To me, that would make more sense as an R1. It's an R2, but.
And the irony is in that area, Rich, as you know, we've got soil problems. We've got a soil problem down in that area between, because it's all low wetland, there's a lot of non-urban.
That's true. Backside of my house is.
Get backside of your house. But in Clearview Acres, as we know, was a, and was basically a small esker of gravel. And the best, as Ben the Door said, the best potato farming in town.
But if you were to look at it, it would make more sense for this area down here to be R1 than it does for that area over there. If for no other reason, just the size of the lots. You know, I'm in an R2 zone and I've got,
It's already here.
Both of the neighbors on both sides of my house have less than two acres.
Yeah, I fail to understand why from the Turnpike to the Post Road is different than the Post Road to God's Brook Brook. I mean, you drive along and to me, that doesn't look, quite frankly, on Greater Vinegar Hill, you got a lot greater density than you do in any spot on Limerick Road. Right?
You do.
Down in my neighborhood. Look at my neighborhood.
And that's, you know, that's an issue, so maybe we should look at that.
Before the railroad tracks?
Oh, honestly, maybe we should look at that and say, the next time there is a town meeting, we should go and say we wanna change the R1 and move it to a different section. Because it doesn't make any sense where it's located. There are better neighborhoods, there are places that are more highly or more densely populated than this stretch right along here. Now, campground road, yeah, that makes sense to be in R1. But go right down Limerick Road, that makes no sense. I don't think there's six buildings on the road.
Haven't Senate Road and One Avenue. Well, and what those, again, it's, frankly, Kennybunk and Kennybunkport are vibrant communities, people want to live close to them, you know?
But that's what I'm saying. I think we need to look at it and say, do we wanna go to the town at a town meeting and suggest that the zone itself be changed because it's not appropriate for where it is? And it would be better served to put it in someplace else.
Rich, a question to ask you on that. Don't you need a warrant to turn out and have any discussion? Because if it isn't a warrant, you can't, no, I'm just saying, if it isn't on a warrant, you can't even bring anything up for discussion at a town meeting.
No, no, what I'm saying is that we develop it and we go and we say, the next time there's a town meeting, we wanna have this item put on the warrant. The same way we put these, all of these ordinance changes on the warrant this time.
That's what I was getting at, sir.
But, yeah.
So Ted, could I, could I ask or suggest that we have a session similar to what we did with the Shoreland Zone up in the CEO's office where we've got, or bring maps here? Almost more of a workshop session, cuz I think that's where we're all struggling.
Agreed. I could do that, and I'm sorry, I should have brought those along. I'd almost rather have it in the CEO's office because I can pull all sorts of maps out. And I can print out a new one if we need one right then and there, so I kind of like that idea a little better. So, yeah, we could do that. My question to you, so when you schedule it, I'd be happy to do that, but my question would be, ultimately, as the board knows, everybody's got their own little sphere of authority. And the planning board, unless the selectmen so deem it, we have a standing ad hoc committee called the Comp Plan Review Committee. If the board wants to review some of this stuff, do you think it might be in the board's best interest, if you wanna make progress on this, to have a meeting with the Comp Plan Review Committee and say, we have some concerns, we have some issues we wanna go over with you? And discuss it with them, cuz otherwise what we would have, and I'm just giving you a scenario here, what if, we will have a war between two boards.
Not only will we have a war, we will have the same problem we had a while back when we said, when we tried, the first time we went through and we changed the index to the comprehensive plan. Not the plan, to the land use order.
Table of contents.
Yeah, we changed the table of contents and people showed up and freaked out.
I think that was an unusual situation, which I think everybody was surprised.
I think that was somebody exercising their muscle.
It could be, but the simple fact is that at this point now, the comp plan committee's got some defense, that they're gonna have to defend their decision making. And the planning board's on the fence, and of course, they'd have a legitimate, playing devil's advocate, they have a legitimate saying, a reason to say, where were you guys when we were going over this? Where were you guys? You never said boo.
We were busy working on the suggestions for Townhouse Corner District.
I would respectfully submit that I was in Virginia, except for the comp plan committee meetings in which I attended and expressed many of these concerns and was ignored. So I most certainly was there.
So I would.
And I was speaking rhetorically at the hearing.
I think it's a great idea to have that come here.
I think we should have a workshop first, to get on, no, a planning board discussion, to get on, to have, to come to a consensus from this board and then approach them with, hey, this is what we're struggling with.
I can, we can set that up.
So let's work on that.
When you wanna do it. Schedule it, because we have a lot of stuff.
Twenty-second, we're gonna have to check whatever agenda items, stuff that's come in that we'll have to deal with.
What you will have on the twenty-second, I could tell you right now what you're gonna have on the twenty-second. You will probably have Motorland, you will have Stillton, you will have.
Only if he reached, only if they sign that consent decree.
The only reason there, he's not on the eighth, it's because it wasn't signed as of today. You'll have also Branch Brook Fuels, we'll be submitting that.
Okay.
I think Phil Labby may be submitting something like that.
He should be getting ready soon.
Yeah, I would think so.
But I think they were gonna have a discussion with the guys that.
We have to discuss, we're having a public hearing on Bentley's Campground.
On the eighth, yep.
Don't we have to have?
You might have some time on there, I mean, it all depends on what you guys wanna do. Cuz you got Bentley's, you've got Motorland, you've got.
We've got Bentley's and Motorland.
Caparundle, that's it.
Caparundle coming in that day.
That's all you got. That's all you've got.
Let's Caparundle come the back door.
Caparundle's coming down back for your final approval and just.
Oh, yes, that's right, that's right, on those sites. Shoppling, shoppling the cars.
Actually, he gave it to me today.
Did he really? But he gave it to you today cuz he knows if he didn't give it to you today, he's not on the agenda.
Basically, yes.
Came in the last minute. I don't know what to do with Motorland, you guys are gonna have to tell me that, where I'm supposed to live in Motorland. You and I talked, but are you expecting a product from them or expecting a reaction from the code enforcement officer and I?
We are.
I, I thought Jamie was very clear in his, although I've been told that it was supposedly unclear. I thought Jamie was clear speaking for the board that the detention pond and needed to be put in immediately and that the.
Drainage.
And that the culvert that was put in, that we need a stormwater management plan, formal stormwater management plan, and that some, the first step was detention pond, second step was for them to come back with a proposal about the culvert. And I did wanna go on the record that the contractor's repeated statement that they put the culvert back in because they hit ledge stresses incredulity. And I'm not a geologist, but I just don't think there's a rock down there.
Nothing that their equipment couldn't overcome. So, yeah, I mean, just to second sort of what Chip said, is on the culvert in the rear was for them to assess what their future needs for the backside of that parcel, you know, that building we're gonna be and propose something to us, because right now, we were not, you know, we wouldn't have approved the placement of that culvert and the construction of that culvert like it is.
Because the engineer has called me up and left a message that it's his understanding that he, Jim and I have to get together and come up with a resolution back there.
They are supposed to propose the resolution to you.
Yank it out.
They are supposed to propose a resolution to you and Jim that you guys agree with.
So it comes to us or does it come out to you guys?
It'll come to us, I suppose, but, I mean, if they wanna come up with a, the way I characterized it to them was if they wanna come up with a solution that left the culvert. That's what Paul Gadbois is retained for.
That's fine, but design it with the entrance and exit that aren't at forty-five or more degree angles for the flow of the water.
But we should, so let's not beat that one while they're not here.
The other thing.
I would just wanna clarify.
I know you needed some direction.
So that I know, I would assume therefore that if I don't get anything from, well, I didn't get anything today, so what am I supposed to do about this?
They aren't ready yet, then. The other thing is that the detention pond was, is supposed to be, it was very, Paul was told very clearly, make a decision about whether you're gonna keep the door or not. Regardless of what decision that is, design the pond and build it now. Period. And I will note that yesterday, when it was not raining, I was able to drive by the facility and look down that side of the building. Today, when it was pouring rain, there were multiple vehicles blocking the view down that side of the building. It could be complete coincidence. Tomorrow will even be better.
There were two other items that we told them.
Yes, the propane.
On the propane lines, they had to get something from Chambé to document this. And I told Paul that I wanted, I wanted, I want a map that tells me exactly how much impervious surface is out there.
I believe it were a two point nine nine?
Two point nine nine before they did that other stuff.
I actually can add something there. The code enforcement officer has turned that issue over to being Department of Environmental Quality. The Department of Environmental Protection, because there are some knowledgeable individuals who believe that the two point nine nine is a fabrication.
Oh, it's an alternative fat.
That.
Couldn't resist.
We wanna be careful like Jamie says about talking too much about the adaptation.
Because it's on record.
I told Paul to bring us something, I wanna know exactly how much impervious surface is out there.
I do not have any of these items here. So, do I put them on the agenda for the eighth?
No.
So we only have two items for the eighth. We can do our workshop if you want.
Can't do the workshop?
We'd have to move. I'm sorry, Marty?
We can't have everything in public hearing or anything else?
We've got a public hearing that day.
Yeah, we have a public hearing, we've got two items. One's gonna be pretty much the same dunk, I understand, that's, you guys have made the decision on Caparundle, right?
Yes.
Okay, so then you're gonna basically have the public hearing, then you're gonna have Bentley's.
But I don't think we can have the public hearing upstairs.
No, we can't. So we'd have to suffer here, I'm gonna have to put the maps on, unless you wanna wait until later in the month.
I would rather try and, yeah, see what you might be able to produce for us or broadcast that we could, I mean, cuz honestly, I think even if we had a large scale zoning map that, that, you know, had different shades or colors for the different zoning districts would be very beneficial to just visualizing where the R1 is.
Well, I could just give you the zoning map. Again, I could put that on.
Some scale with the parcels would, I think, be helpful.
Yeah, I have that.
With existing, the size of existing parcels, I really didn't think of that until I was talking, but there's a stretch of river road from the railroad tracks to Route 1 that's more densely populated than any part of the Limerick Road.
Well, you'd be interested, because I have a map that John, Bill and I did separate maps, but we did maps of coding the various sizes of lots.
Cool.
Yeah, it's color coded.
I'd love to see that.
That shows where the big lots are. And what, so, yeah, that's gotta be still in there, I'll pull that up. I also have the PDF of that somewhere. In fact, I could probably go get it out of my car, I'd get my computer there.
Don't, don't do it.
Yeah, I'm not gonna do that.
All right, can we?
Okay, so I do want.
Can we go back to this? And let me make a suggestion. That I think Rich's point about uses, regardless of where R1 is, the uses of congregant care facilities, animal husbandry, equestrian facilities, agritourism and restricted contractor storage yards don't belong in R1.
I agree. I don't think they belong there at all.
A question for you, to the chair.
Go ahead.
To the chair, turn on that question. If you have acreage in the R1, okay? That could sustain contractor yard.
I don't think, I don't think.
I'm just.
I understand what you're saying. I don't think it should be there.
But therein, that gets into the heart of the placement of the R1. You know, because if it's, if it's in a urbanized part of town, then it's gonna almost naturally start to divest itself from those things, but we're not there yet. So, I mean, we dealt with that, didn't we deal with that with the equestrian facilities? Didn't we have a provision in there for a one one scale of equestrian in the R1 and then other scales in?
Yep, in the R1.
Right.
Yeah, it was basically, it, it was a minimal lot size and then number of horses that are supported.
Right.
And that's
You're right, we, we, we did go through that process.
We did go through that process rather exhaustively.
If that ends up being the case, it ends up being the case. I still don't think it should look, that they belong there. I, I'm, I firmly believe the R1 zone should be residential zone.
Only.
Only. That's my opinion about R1.
Does that include home occupation? I mean, eh, no.
Hang on, let me answer the question. Home occupation would be a subsidiary use similar to an accessory in-law apartment. So I wouldn't have a problem, cause home occupation is not going to have a lot of people coming in and out and generating a lot of traffic, or it should not. So you could, you could have a daycare with a couple of kids in it, and it wouldn't be a big deal, but you wouldn't have a large scale daycare operation like we do on Route One.
Daycare center.
Right, you might, you would, you might end up with three or four kids. You might end up generating an additional six or seven trips a day. I, I don't see that as being a major imposition on the R1 district. So from a home occupation and, and we could look at it and say, well, it has to be a certain kind of home occupation.
That's where
Cause there are towns that we, that you could not be a mechanic in a home, for a home op, home situation. Although in benefit, you can be. But in Sanford, you can't be an accountant and have an office in your house. You, you end up looking at them going, okay, what do we wanna do?
What was that, that same kind of problem? The West End?
Yeah, so you end up having to look at it and decide whether or not you wanna allow home occupations. I would be amenable to that, but I would not be amenable to a lot of ninety percent of the businesses that
Well, you see, we also have a little issue here that I'm gonna have to bring up at some point, I may as well approach it right now, cause it's related from this issue. And that is, we have an exemption for contractors who are small scale. They don't have to get a home occupation permit. They're allowed to run their business out of their home by, de facto, without any requirement. They just can't have employees come there. They can't have any vehicles with three or more masters. That's the only limitation. That's caused some problems in the past.
Then we may have to look at it.
We probably will. The, the problem is being neighbors getting upset. Neighbor's getting upset starts off at five o'clock in the morning, loading and unloading and stuff like that. And, and, and that, I think we have to reexamine that. It was a good thing when Arundel Park was two acre and everybody was spread out to put in some of these denser neighborhoods that we're starting to get. Uh, it's not, we have compatible all those issues. And just as we said, only business in business zones. You know, unless they're mixed, you know, got residential mixed up or stratified in there. There were certain residential zones where it should be only residential.
Okay, I have one other good question on the R1. Okay? You gonna have your landscaping buffers in there too? Since you're doing it to your businesses?
Well, that's gonna be an R3.
No.
Yeah.
Harvey homeowner, who wants to live so close you're, you're making it property land, you're gonna have landscaping it or not?
We'll have to look at it and address the issue.
I'm curious, the people that strip cut trees that I planted in spruce fields. Are they gonna have to put a buffer up? You're the one that broke the stuff.
Who wants stuff?
Some of it.
You and your buddy.
I, what buddy's that?
Comprehensive plan.
I think you all know.
I, I told you, you know I'm not bashful.
I, 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 I provided advice, but I did not do it in the right way.
Why?
Well, I think
Can we move on?
Yes, we can. So we, the comprehensive plan would like us to combine R1, R2 and R3 into one district. Before we discuss what that district would look like, we need to decide whether or not we agree with that, and think that we should do so.
I think we need to see a map first.
No, no, R2 and R3.
Sorry, I think we need
I started saying R1.
Yep.
It's R2 and R3.
I think we need maps to see what territory we're covering.
I think if we're gonna do it, we're not gonna do it
Not tonight?
Not next week.
No, I, I, I think that the discussion we have to have is, do we think it's a good idea? Or do we not think it's a good idea? If we don't think it's a good idea, then we don't have to do anything, we can just say, not gonna happen.
I'd like to, I'd like to see maps to see area of what we're speaking of.
Okay.
Charwin Town.
I mean, from what I've heard, it doesn't sound that the R3 is that substantive in town?
Um, it's kinda funny, no, the R, the R3, the way it's written now is not that substantive. It was, uh
You mean sizable?
Well, no, it's sizable there. It is a sizable area. It's not a small area, if you look at it this, this whole area down here?
Speak wrong then?
These additions in through here from this, that's R3. The only real change has been R3. R3 is basically on Log Cabin and Senate Road. And down in parts of River Road. And basically where we're on River Road. Uh, turns the corner.
Hey, I don't have that.
What, decorated here?
That's why I'm
Yeah.
Heck, no, you look at
It might not be, it might not be, I think River Road is pretty much all R4.
R what?
So
Two.
So again, I
Two.
No, I'm, I'm, in, we were pointing to the map, I'm sorry, Marty, we were I was saying down in this area here, I was pointing to the map that that
Yeah, but you see, Country Garden Estate.
I know where you are, it's R2.
But not all, but not all the houses are two acres.
I know.
Some of them are almost one acre.
Yeah.
Sorry. This document that we got proposed changes to the R, R they talk about eliminating it, and their rationale for it is that, that there are the only noticeable difference between is that the R3 district requires a larger front yard setback of seventy-five feet. And three uses permitted in the R3 are not permitted in the R2. Sawmills campgrounds and mineral extraction are not allowed in the R2. Those are the, the items that the complaint looked at and said everything else would fit in if, if we combine those two districts together.
But it, will we make clear that the idea is that R3 would cease to exist and it would all become R2?
Yes.
Yeah. It'd be the same, same zone and same dimensions, it would, we knew it would reduce that dimension. And those three uses would disappear from the
So I was, instead of tonight, instead of saying that I'm on board with a carte blanche going from R3 to R2, what I would prefer to do is sort of like what Marty said, look at the map and perhaps there are areas that make more sense for the R, in R3 area to go R4 instead of R2.
That could be.
So
The only problem is, remember when you're doing that, you learn to be taking existing properties that have been developed as as, you know that they're gonna have setbacks that are, that relax. If you go to R4, they're gonna need another acre. Cause R4 is a three acre zone and R2 and 3 are two acres.
Yeah, that, that's, that's a, that, that is a hardship on a property on R, in my mind.
To go to R4?
To go to R4.
Yeah.
The front yard setback is one thing, but going from two acres to three acres, something is
But that's
Yep. And then, you know, they make the point that, that the Red App, Red Apple Campground and a sawmill, and the only one I can think of would, is does Zoo Camp a sawmill?
No.
Cause, oh, I just can't do anything else out there.
There's sawmill, uh, um, I don't wanna let it also
No, it's 111, I'm talking about down there, there was a sawmill.
Where?
I'm trying to remember.
Down close to Townhouse Corner?
Yeah.
Yeah, Zoo, Zoo, no.
It's not just Zoo, there was another one.
Well, I don't, I don't know which one it was.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I know where it is, that you use Kenny King's law, uh, sawmill.
Well
That's in the R3.
They, they
Yeah, but also too, you have on the other end, uh, you have some of them turn, who have a sawmill or type of sawmill. But not the big, what we call a sawmill. It's down like, uh, on, um, the New Road, is it New Road? No. Down near the historical
Or, yeah.
Uh, Roberg.
Yep.
I mean, it's
But I, I, I just brought that up because it, they made the point
Yeah, I know that.
That the Red Apple Campground and a sawmill, they don't say which one will become nonconforming. We're gonna take Red Apple Campground and say he's a nonconforming use now.
No.
Which is gonna create issues for him.
Yeah, I, when I heard that, I thought so too.
Yeah.
But no, I'm just, that's what it says.
We, we know how to get around that, cause we've done it before. We know exactly, no, citizen.
Yeah.
We make existing uses conforming in that zone. We say that's, that use in this location is a permitted use. And the attorney, town attorney doesn't like it, but she says it's legal.
What's your objection to that? She, she doesn't like anything we do.
Hey, lawyers have
Processed.
Hey, Chip.
Pretty much.
Chip, lawyers have opinions, okay? Ask Dan McCann I, we both have opinions.
Okay, so if we look at the at, at the next meeting on, on the eighth?
Wanna do it on the eighth, we can do it on the eighth.
Cause we can look at, we're gonna be looking at the map for the R1s, so we can look at the map for R2 as well.
And I, I will just also remind you that I think the R3 was intended to be sort of like the intermediate step between the R4 and the R2.
Yep.
They were supposed to have standards that preserved rural character and had some uses that did. But those never made it to the, to the surface, just like the scenic overlay district along Route 111 never came to the surface either.
With scenic overlay?
Scenic overlay district.
Where's that?
You knew that. This is, this is
The only thing I do about fifty-five and green grass.
Oh, you remember that.
No, I don't, scenic overlay?
Yeah, it's in the two thousand five and two thousand seven, um
It, it is in the complaint.
It's, it's in the complaint.
Well, let's put it this way.
We got it, we, we took it out.
There's a lot of things that's put in there and never been done.
No, it wasn't, wasn't done. Planning Board refused to do it. And apparently the Planning Board or its other parties decided not to do the R3.
Well, that, that addresses that issue.
Right.
We'll look at it in two weeks and make a decision. The last item on the agenda is the food truck issue.
Okay. Can't move through the chair, can I? I, I, I think that the planner presented some interesting decision tree analysis, which I don't know that we have, oh yeah, I'm sorry, it's right here in front of us.
Yep.
So I conflicted personally on this. On, on the one hand, it, please understand, I, I spent twenty-eight years doing municipal finance. So if it doesn't add to tax revenue, I don't like it. That, on, on, on one level. On, on another level, if it doesn't hurt anything, then
Why not?
Why not?
And third thing, it feeds your belly.
And, and, and i- if we had a, the, the there was a document the planner provided us, electronic document from some national planners thing, but Jake is talking about San Diego and this place and that place, and I, I, I've seen the food trucks in Los Angeles. That has nothing to do with us. New York City has nothing to do with us. I, I, I couldn't care less what they've done. Like, I, I, I really couldn't. The, the, the question is, we have at least one existing business who's successful at, at, at what he does, has several food trucks and wants to be able to locate one or more of them in Arundel. And, and, and then we have an existing business which has a bricks and mortar restaurant, but also likes to bring food trucks in on weekends with parking. Either in, on the Food, Route One, on Route One or in a parking lot.
Well, that, that I think is the very first question we have to answer. How do you feel about food trucks? Do we wanna allow them in town or not? We can go through the discussion of what they need to look like, what kind of service they want to have, but we have to address that.
That's really where, where I was heading, and, and it's because I, I, I think the idea that, that in that planner's document, it talked about employment for immigrants and, uh
So we're gonna bring in people for benefit?
Hang on.
Underemployed, we're not bringing not bringing, not even those, those things either. Uh, but if, if if you've got five food trucks in town, that means mine would be quartered by ten people? Twelve people? We don't even necessarily live in Arundel, so
And again, that, that's also a question if, if we wanna have them, how many do we wanna have? Do we wanna settle limit on them? But I think that, I, I think the initial question to have is how do you feel about having food trucks, food trucks? Should we allow them?
Personally, we, we have a great, how many restaurants are there in, in Arundel?
Two, two to make.
I think there's three.
Four.
Yeah, yeah.
Four. It's four, five. Five.
Yeah.
Five?
Six.
Six.
I can think of
Seafood Center.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a restaurant?
Yeah.
Seafood Center will
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, don't, don't forget, you gotta run the markets. That's, that's, that is a restaurant, they have sit-down seating.
Exactly.
Okay.
You got, you got mics. You got mics right next door.
Right?
Right next to it.
Yeah, cause he's open again, so, yeah.
No, what do you mean he's open again?
He, he's open.
The, it used to be what, Blue Moon or whatever it is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a lot of other things.
Okay. Okay.
And and there was somebody else that was in there for a very short time.
Trade Winds?
I you know, I I I I don't think of Trade Winds, cause.
What is Trade?
Yeah. It's over as they run all.
At the flea market.
It's a flea market.
It's at the flea market, it sits right there.
You got.
I know the Brothers.
Across the road.
Yeah.
You got a run goal, House of Pizza.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We do.
You're right, yeah, we do.
I thought we saw it last night.
It's right across from SNL.
Yep.
That's that's across from you.
You're right, I I go there every Sunday.
Then we go up on the.
Which one is that?
What's the name, what's the one?
Roadhouse.
Infinity.
Oh yeah?
Infinity, Infinity.
We're driving down, everybody in the car's like, oh, look, we got our own House of Pizza.
Never been there.
Yeah, uh and it begins with an A, here's Abby's. Ashley's.
Ashley's, oh, L on one eleven?
Yeah.
We do not have a.
Is that still in a run?
Restaurant business.
We don't.
In in the town of Run goal, number one, and number two, the restaurants that we do, we don't have a meals tax.
We're never, nobody, nobody's gonna give us one.
I understand that Ted, but my point is that we're not. If if we collected a meals tax from a bricks and mortar restaurant that we didn't get from a food truck, then I would say no to the food truck, because I wanna catch the tax. But we don't get any tax. The the only thing we would be purging is property tax. So the question is, if someone is not allowed to bring the food truck in, are they going to build a bricks and mortar restaurant? And the answer is no, not in Run goal, if not. So we're not losing anything by allowing them, in my opinion.
Yeah, I I think we should allow food trucks.
Yes.
I think they gotta be, there's gonna be some restrictions placed on them. I don't want a food trailer.
No, no.
That's gonna be parked overnight and.
No, big, big, big difference between a truck and a trailer, I I'm.
Right, but that's that's a that's a discussion that if we decide that we wanna allow them, that's a discussion we could have.
Transitory or mobile.
Mobile food service.
Food food service.
Okay.
I personally think it's no harm, no foul, we ought to figure out a, yeah, it's sub-subject to restrictions, I think it might.
Yeah.
But what what do you all think?
Okay, then then I think I think it's safe to say that we're unanimous in our agreement, say, yeah, this there's not a bad, not a bad deal. We have to put restrictions on it.
Decision one is yes.
Decision one is yes.
Ooh, why do we have to put restrictions?
Because you don't know what you're gonna end up with.
Because I don't want the fried dough truck from the Freiberg Fair with nine hundred lights on it, set up at nine thirty at night.
Wait, 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 wait.
You asked, that's.
No, no, wave it.
It's gotta have molten.
A molten.
You can turn on your scene, the trailer or turn on the truck?
The trailer.
Okay.
Can we stick to the, can we stick to the decision tree?
Yeah.
That's all we're doing, that's why this is.
Let's just let's just do a decision tree. Mobile ice cream trucks, who can possibly object to that? Good humor.
Reg, we couldn't stop them now if they came driving into town.
No.
Oh, they do drive through.
Side of the road or.
They do drive in.
Okay, so so that that's a yes, that's a yes, okay.
A canteen truck that would that would, these are the ones you see that pull up at job sites and.
It say canteen on them.
Yeah.
Yeah. What's wrong with them?
Nothing.
It's a question, that's all.
Well. Actually, I do have a quick, that a canteen truck takes business away from the Run goal market.
The only thing, no.
Have one of their burritos.
Okay. The only thing is, hey, the only thing is, Chip.
I would be fine with anything out of that.
The break isn't long enough to turn it out, to come from a shop, I I hear you.
Generally, the canteen truck is selling you coffee and donuts in the morning.
That's about it, yeah.
Suzukis.
Oh, also.
All right, I I'll say yes on a canteen truck.
Food food push carts?
No.
I agree with Chip, no.
Wave it, wave it, wave it.
Where you're gonna push them down the side.
Wait a minute, guys. Wait a minute.
You guys haven't been the gray Talani dogs.
Wave it.
Yeah, Marty.
Food truck or food cart, all right?
Food push carts, yeah.
Okay, depending on, not a long uh traveled area, okay? Meaning like for an example, because when we had originally wanted one down on um uh the the Reds Garage, we said no, no, we said no because of traffic stopping and everything else.
Was that Jimmy Paxton in Hobbs?
No, it wasn't Jimmy then.
What would would the the operation in West Kenny Bog right across the street from the Village Tavern? Is is that a food push cart?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Never seen it.
It's not?
Haven't been over there.
No, it's not. Cause that was ringing a bell to me, Chip.
It 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 it's kind of a.
Yeah.
Restaurant, isn't it?
It's, yeah, it's it's almost on a permanent.
It's like a, it's like a farm stand.
Picnic table and stuff, okay.
Now, when I think of a, think of a push cart, you think of, all right, let's go, let's go to Portland. Let's go, let's go to Tommy's Quark or or someplace that's a classic hot dog push cart. You get your hot dog.
Home Depot.
Home Depot.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
As a push cart.
Yeah.
Well, the other thing, how about like if somebody dishing out hard ice cream? Or 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 your pretzels or your peanut?
Yeah, it doesn't matter what it is that you're selling.
Right.
It's that if that's the push cart.
It's non-motorized.
It may have, it may be hot, it may be cold. The product is in there, there might be some some condiments that you put on top of it, but it's pretty much pre-cooked or pre-frozen.
So would that be something when you when you you call it a push cart, that would likely to be trailered in?
Yeah.
No, 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 no. It could be push, yeah, no.
Or or push, right.
Some of them would motorize.
You need the pusher to pull it.
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen push carts hooked onto the front of bicycles when you when you drive around.
Yes, that's what I, that's what I was calling more of a push cart.
Oh, that's what I'm I'm thinking Ted was envisioning too, but.
And and to me, I say no. I don't know how the rest of you.
Now, here here's a question, just a theory. Okay, push cart like that, somewhere like uh under a mass gathering group area. Okay, as long as you have the room, not off, you know, staying at one place, not going bouncing from site to site to site.
So what, you saying yes or no, Marty?
I'm asking the question. That's where the question, to answer the question, you'll get a yes or no.
I'm not sure of the question.
He wants to know if you can have those at mass gatherings.
I think they do, right now, Belli's does already, they have trucks.
Almost like a.
No, he has also turned a, somebody there dipping out ice cream.
Don't know.
Oh yeah, just ask a Run goal ice cream.
Okay.
Oh, she is.
What do you think is going on?
No, no, or is she?
Is she doing it or is she?
She was handing out samples.
Jamie?
I don't have, I guess I don't have a strong conviction against them. I don't, I don't think that they're gonna be the more popular type, given the nature of, you know, where they may go in town, but I don't, I don't have any real hard feelings against them.
Marty?
Uh, again, depends on where they're located. I don't wanna, I don't wanna push cart, I don't wanna push cart being run up and down Route one.
You gotta make a decision, yes or no on push carts.
On the concept, we'll get to the, we'll get to the.
We'll get the location later on. But on the concept of a push cart, yes or no?
The decision tree.
Yes.
Okay, uh it's three to two against.
Who said no?
Roger, Chip and I. Okay. Food trucks.
Sure.
Yeah, not a problem with food trucks. Food trailers.
Yes.
No.
No. I don't like the idea of trailer, of the trailers, because the trailer becomes a permanent fixture at that site.
Look.
No, don't.
I I I, it's too logistically difficult to move the trailer this way.
Yeah.
That's right.
I thought about something like that, Chip, but.
It took a second for Redway to catch on, but.
I like it, but yeah.
No, but I mean, it's also, it 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 would be seasonal, wouldn't be year-round.
Yeah.
But at least.
Just like the other trailers. It's just a. It's too logistically difficult to move.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Did we get three names on that?
You got two.
We got three names.
So in other words, you don't want the guy in town.
The three obstructionists.
You don't want, you don't want the one who.
Thank you very much. We're gonna build a wall. And make somebody else pay for it.
We're gonna get better for it.
Okay, so then then the question becomes, where do we wanna allow these to take place?
My question was, the one that the the one we have in town, you don't want them in town then?
I'm not gonna address the one that we have in town, I'm addressing the concept of whether or not we wanna have food trailers. And I don't wanna have food trailers.
I know, maybe.
We could, at least with a food truck, at the end of the day, you're gonna drive, you're gonna get in it, you're gonna drive it home. And you're gonna come back.
Not necessarily.
You 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 might not.
You may not.
But 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 you 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 the 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 risk of it becoming a, in effect, a permanent structure, like certain other trailers that I won't mention, uh I I just, I don't, I I don't like it.
It won't be.
We we may, we may say that a truck can stay in one place for twelve days or thirty days or whatever it is, but the the trailer just, it's the propensity for it to stick in place and the axle let it rust out.
No, wait.
Okay, we heard, Marty, we heard you covered it before, you said no, so now we're gonna start with the next one.
I just was saying, if you have a renewal permit, it wouldn't be able to stay year-round.
I don't want it staying overnight. Okay, ice cream trucks, what are we gonna have?
Ice cream trucks. I have no problem with an ice cream truck anywhere, including the residential districts, cause they're gonna be driving through and driving away. Or they might go out to the ballpark for uh, do we still have a ballpark?
I was just gonna ask that question, where are you finding a ballpark?
We had one behind the school at one point.
Well, they still, they.
Parking lot was.
Is it still out there?
Parking lot was chock full last week when we showed up here.
Was it, was there a game going on?
There was something going on.
I I wasn't sure what it was, but yeah, you know, if if you have a something like that, yeah, I don't have a problem with that. Of course, they have to clear it with the school, but.
So are the are the mobile, from a technical standpoint, are the mobile trucks not allowed that that'll drive through periodically?
Um, I don't think it's addressed anywhere.
It's not addressed anywhere, so we are addressing.
So I don't have any issue with it, I just was, I mean.
I think frankly speaking, if it's on the road, it's exempt for all evidences, but it's not exempt from the selectmen's license.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, can can canteen trucks?
Okay, are we all in favor of anywhere?
For for the ice cream trucks?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, this.
I think.
Tonight's not even a challenging one.
Canteen trucks.
Oh, we, wait, we have a night so young.
Tonight's, yeah. Canteen trucks. I think if we're gonna allow them, they should be in a business zone.
Any business zone.
Oh, wait a second, what about a guy, what about guys who are going to a construction site? Oh, that's right. Yeah, but. That's when I bought my burrito.
Okay, no, but but wait a minute, we're we're are we talking about a residential construction site or a business construction site?
Talking about a place where they're banging nails.
Can you just take Cape Run goal cottages?
Yeah.
Canteen truck must operate there.
Do you think Joe's gonna let a canteen truck in?
It was a hypothetical.
Yeah, I'm just being hypothetical here.
So is this, again, is this a mobile or a?
Mobile, every.
Okay, so I think we should, we should clarify that like we did with the ice cream truck. Cause when I was thinking of it, it was more of a stationary thing.
No, canteen trucks are no, they're not stationary.
And you know, I I think anytime we get to anything that's, you know, and maybe that's what needs to be described in our definition a little bit better, it's, it's it's parked in place on private property. Well, that's.
Right, okay, yeah.
It's parked in place on private property. Cause part, first of all, I think we're going to basically saying that you can't have any of this stuff on public property, on public property. Or let's put it this way, you can't have it in a right-of-way. It's gotta be on private property, it can't be on a town right-of-way or a state right-of-way.
Okay, so if we do that, then, you know, I'm I'm looking at it thinking it should be a business zone.
Yeah.
Any business zone.
A canteen?
Sure.
Yeah. I, if it's like an ice cream truck, then let them go wherever.
Yeah.
They wanna sell coffee at, you know, in Clearview Estates at nine o'clock in the morning for people out doing yard work? Go ahead, go for it.
Wait, whoa, 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 whoa.
I like that, I'm gonna beer truck.
I'm not, I'm not. I'm not crazy about the idea of a canteen truck as a residential.
Why? What are they doing differently than an ice cream truck, except for catering to a different?
Democrat.
Democrat?
Catering to a different demographic.
Okay.
Ice cream's good.
Coffee's bad.
Coffee's not bad.
Burritos bad.
Canteen truck, coffee is bad.
Hey, if you have a bunch of carp, just put it up, a house.
I mean.
What's wrong with a guy stopping by during?
Yeah, and and I agree, if you know, if they're if they're similar to to like the ice cream trucks.
Uh, it 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 if it's if it's a question of something that just, you know, comes by, you know, the guys drop all their power hammers and tools and stuff and run over.
They run out.
And and then they, you know, they they it's there for fifteen minutes and it leaves, that's one thing.
So we could, I mean, we could, we can add the requirement that they can't.
Well, that's the model for a canteen truck, I mean, they they make their money from local construction.
So but but that's where we need to, and then I wrote it online, it was wrote, just like we had mobile ice cream trucks, mobile canteen trucks.
They don't, they don't stop.
They don't stop other than to make their sale.
I, as long as it's mobile, anywhere is fine with me.
Okay, okay. Food trucks.
Food push, yeah, push carts are off.
Push carts are off.
So food trucks, I, when I think of food trucks, I'm thinking of of places like, well, Rapid Rays in Benefit. Used to be a food truck.
Yeah.
Where you drive up at night. In Saco, yeah?
Just saying.
Benefit Saco, it's the same, who is that, Auburn, that's the same place.
Two two cities, the same thing.
That's right.
Well, isn't that their motto, or what is it?
Yeah, it's close.
But food food trucks.
That was a hundred dollars worth.
Residential neighborhoods absolutely not. Route one, Route one eleven? Sure.
But I I was thinking more along Route one and ARD.
What's ARD?
Route one eleven.
It it's Route one eleven to the power line. After the power line, it's not.
Okay, so you're, so it's a business district on Route one or Route one eleven?
Correct.
So you got.
So Townhouse Corner is out.
No. No, I.
It's a business zone.
Yeah.
Then it's any business zone.
Any business zone.
Okay, then any business zone. I won't have a problem with that.
So just any business zone.
Any business zone.
Okay, that means they can't come to uh home days.
Get a special permit.
Yeah, special. They can get a special license from the Board of Selectmen to do that.
Why do they need one?
Because they don't have.
For one day.
Because.
Cause sort of.
For the same reason Bentley's has to get a mass gathering permit for one day.
He has it.
Yeah, I know it, but that doesn't mean he's not supposed to.
In other words, you turn on under old home days, you can't have somebody come in.
I think, I think there's, for special events, you know, there's gotta be exemptions.
Yep, and and we could put it in there.
Right.
For special events.
I think we should.
Yeah.
Okay, the idea of having a food cart at, you know, let's say, an Italian ice is at a special event, even a wedding. And I'll tell you honestly, our town manager, his daughter's getting a wedding, is is the American wedding. And uh.
No wonder he looks so great.
How much does that cost us?
That's why, that's why he has no meals and.
How much does that cost us?
He's, how much does it cost a meal? I didn't, are you contributing to this?
No.
You're gonna walk the bride down the aisle, oh, is that it?
People love to hear that, nobody's gonna help.
I don't even know where it is.
He watches these tapes now.
Good, aight.
But uh, in any case, the uh, yeah, he's, he's his daughter wants that food truck there. Doesn't wanna do the catering, you have food trucks, everybody gets to go and pick out the food they want from the various trucks, Mexican, you know, whatever, and they have a food truck there.
Then in addition to this, you know, we've got any business zone and we we can put in the category of special events.
Special events exemptions.[1594.44] Special events, exceptions.
Yeah. Exactly.
Okay, good. All right, let's go to page two.
And food trailers, we ruled out anyway.
We ruled out food trailers and push carts, so food trucks, should they be, should they be moved periodically or can they stay there for a specified period of time?
Move daily.
I, I, I disagree. I did agree on the food trucks. If you own, I, I, I say food truck. I don't know, once a week move, once a week, I think that's.
Everyone.
I think, how, how are you gonna enforce that?
The same way we enforce every other land use, so it's the same.
Yeah, okay.
We're gonna rely on their doing what they said they would do.
If you own the property, if you own the property, and you know a food truck, you have to move it? It's your property.
I'm with you on that part.
You know, surprisingly enough, so am I. If you own the property, if you have.
Property, right.
Well, if you're renting, if you're renting it, move it, move it.
No, no, if you're renting the property, right? Like if you're renting a parcel.
It would be seasonal.
If you're renting a space on a property, I'm, I'm going to, you get to rent, oh, what Mike's doing over in Canada. It's not Mike.
Yes.
Said, you know, I'm renting this space from you for as long as the space is available.
Seasonal, usually.
Yeah, he does it seasonal.
How about, how about move every twelve weeks? Three months.
Why?
Because it's the same condition we put on the camper.
Cause it's supposed to be temporary.
Same thing, it would be a food car, uh, food trailer.
Do we need more information?
That was my thought, is what, what is the typical?
Well, in San Diego. No, we're not there. And also two hundred.
Well, in Portland.
I was gonna say, Portland has a fairly restrictive.
They have a very, very restricted.
Can you get a copy of that?
When you say very restricted, in that they have to move offsite nightly?
Um, and that's why their Facebook pages are so important, because the food trucks have, the social, use the social media to identify people where they're at.
Where they're going?
Yep, exactly. Yeah.
Oh, they, they do that.
It's all noodle.
They do that a lot.
Yeah, but Portland is restrictive in the similar sense that you're talking about these Facebook pages.
See, she's a good hire.
So what, what, what happened? Did, did, did a bunch of people from Lain, Oregon, that couldn't get space in Portland, Oregon, suddenly take over Portland, Maine?
No, different venue.
It came out of Santa Cruz.
Different venue or anything else, different events, or also too, uh, what's that one trail?
I, I, the, the bottom line is, it, it, I, I, I don't want to see a truck become a permanent fixture.
Right, so it concerns me too.
And so, I'm, I'm comfortable with anything from making it move, honestly, once a week to once every twelve weeks, but three, three months is about my, my threshold of. You know, it, it, it's gotta, it's gotta move at least once every three months.
Yes, but if you're renting a spot?
Yeah.
I, I say three weeks.
You're gonna have to be renting a spot, cause you're gonna be on private property, so you're not gonna be able to, to just drive in there without paying a damn or some, some money.
Then make it once a month, maybe four weeks? No, you're being arbitrarily capricious.
Are you?
It's time for us to find somebody else who's already been arbitrarily capricious.
Good, Ted, find somebody else who's been arbitrarily capricious and back with you.
I'll come back with some good news.
Okay. Uh, decision five. Should the food service have all water, electricity, and liquid waste supplies contained within the vehicle?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yes, yes.
Well, no, I would say that the electrical power can be derived from an outside source.
Well, you know, I mean, you can't, you know, we're not gonna have generate, you know, electrical generating sources.
Well, if you have a Honda, it's gonna be annoying.
Yeah, which is why, which is why I'm saying, yeah, you can, you can get it from an outside power source, you can plug into the building that you rent from.
But, but all of the liquid, everything, water liquids.
Yep.
No, 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 no garden hose.
Contained within the vehicle.
Yeah, and, and no hookups for, you know, like an RV hookup.
I think you can do that for some.
I would think, you know, from.
Oh, I'm sure that you.
I'm not talking about, I am somebody. You can physically do this.
You can physically do it, what it would do to the septic system is a whole different.
Septic. They'll put a grinder in.
So do, do, do these trucks tend to have, like, water storage tanks?
Yeah, yeah, some do, and some do in fact actually go to the local, and they go to the local campground and, and discharge with the food.
Yeah.
Uh, then others, I, there are others, as Chip is, is, is alluding to, that actually do hook up to septic pipes. Same thing with water, you run a hose out from like.
Have you ever seen National Lampoon's Christmas?
Yeah.
You know, that, that.
Yeah.
You just, just, just go to, go to, go to Bitterford where they got storm drains.
I don't wanna ask.
So, so question six, should they provide separate parking for the customers?
I think adequate parking should be available.
So we could define adequate.
Ironically, it can't be based on the number of seats like we would a typical restaurant.
No, you can't.
Nope.
But in, in some cases, you know, what's happened, and, uh, if you do read that about the San Diego experience and so forth, sometimes, sometimes what happens is that they do move, go into a parking lot or something and take up valuable space that the, the other business needs desperately, and they find themselves having some serious problems with on-street parking and illegal parking in other lots and so forth, so. That's why they require them to move every day, is to avoid that continual problem. Um, I'll say, so adequate parking, and we're gonna have to come up with what constitutes adequate parking. And part of that's gonna be based on successful, yeah, but.
Yeah.
And, yeah, we'll.
So.
Okay, separate outdoor seating, picnic bench, are they allowed to have?
I think Jamie had a.
To that point, would they be a conditional use?
I think it's gonna be a conditional use regardless.
Yeah.
Yeah. That would have to come back for renewal.
Yeah, then.
Yeah, it's not something they would have for lifetime. Okay.
Okay.
Outdoor seating?
Outdoor seating.
Tables.
That's up to them. No, that's up to us.
Yeah, but we're, whether we allow that.
Well, so, so, so here's, here's the bottom line question. If, if, do we wanna have a place like Big Daddy's where you have the option of sitting outside and getting the blood removed from you on the bad side? Yeah, so, so customers have the option, or does it, is, is it strictly takeout?
Well, I, I mean, I guess.
I'm, I'm, my, my initial reaction was, you know, just hit, hit and run, but I don't see any harm in a couple picnic tables.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you will find that even in our takeout restaurants, or our food and water takeout restaurants.
Look at a Rundle ice cream, you have to sit down outside.
Yeah, you have, you have to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Look at Tradewinds.
That's a perfect structure. It's a perfect structure now.
I don't, I don't think it's a requirement, but they're allowed to.
Right, that's what, that's what we were really alluding to, they're allowed to have them.
You can have them, but you don't have to have them.
I, 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 I think we should put a limit on the number of.
Don't ask me why, it's arbitrary and capricious.
It is.
Three, three seats or three picnic tables?
Three picnic tables.
But I do think our, our parking needs to be tight today.
About three eight-foot picnic tables. I'll be, I'll be arbitrary and three and capricious and editing.
I actually typed the number of parking spaces.
No.
Well, we're not in a guest room environment, we've already established that.
Business friendly, remember?
Oh, you know, in all these, uh, five, six, and seven, we left off the canteen truck.
Canteen trucks not stopping, they're driving around place, place to place, the same as the ice cream truck.
Right.
Uh, Roger, I, I had the same question, I thought that too, was it?
I wasn't big.
No, no, I didn't, I didn't ask it.
I was hoping you would ask it.
He would.
Yeah, we wouldn't have, so we'll, we'll look at that, we'll address it, and it should be available, the question does become, how much? Yep. And then last, should there be a minimum distance between different temporary food, food service providers? And I think there should be.
Yeah, I think so too, but what would that be?
Why?
Arbitrary and capricious.
So they're not stacked right next to each other?
Why, why can't you have, uh, three, why, why couldn't you have three food trucks? One serving lobster rolls, another is serving hot dogs and hamburgers, and the third one serving.
I, I would say more than one per lot. Cause I'm, I mean, I think if you, if you sort of develop this niche, you know, you could have where you've got a, a, an area that becomes attractive to them.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't want a single, I wouldn't wanna create a problem by a overzealous lot owner deciding he could accommodate six of these things on a half acre parcel and, you know, creating a niche.
You call it a food truck rodeo.
Right.
I, I, I think that's a nice, simple solution.
One for a lot.
One for a lot.
Okay, yeah.
That'll work.
Okay, I'll write it up.
Who knows?
Yes.
Done.
And for Blackbird's feet.
And we will.
I mean, down, is there another page?
No, we only have.
No.
No, there's not a page, page nine.
Oh.
Oh, yeah. Should they be allowed to have sandwich boards, or should signage be confined to the surface of the vehicle? Confined to the vehicle.
Uh, I'm, I'm with you on that.
Confined to the vehicle. And do they have to meet minimum design and lighting standards for their vehicles?
Uh, I mean.
If in orbit, the design standards for the zone they're in.
That's a state inspection. Or lights. Well, well, and, yeah, I, I was thinking sort of like, like the, uh, drive door trucks.
Yeah, those things are a little glaring.
Glaring? High on nuisances.
Yeah. Listen, just if the guy on three oh two can't see as he drives down.
If we could get one for a lot, all up and down Route one, then we'd satisfy Marty's issue with street.
You had to do it, you just had. Okay, then, then, I'm, I'm sorry.
Flashing the serum.
That is funny. That's, if that's the case, one, one thing you did forget, so you can really restrict them what time. It's a good one.
The, the license, the license that the selectmen have issued is a, from seven to seven.
Yes, but what about, what now?
We will be taking over that.
Well, what about summertime?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not.
I'm just telling you, the license that the selectmen issued runs from seven A to seven P, and they, and they refused to extend it into the evening.
So what we could say is either seven to seven, or whatever the selectman's license is. So if the selectman ever changed the license, it will conform to that.
Wait.
Not with.
Time, time, timeout. In June, July, and August, I don't see any reason why these things can't, couldn't be open, it, it are restricted distance districts, right? Why on earth can't they be open till nine o'clock at night?
So you see, you're thinking nine o'clock, I'm thinking eleven.
I was thinking.
I was thinking more like six to ten.
Six A to ten B?
That's probably not the standard.
Yeah, that would work. Uh, the only reason I say eleven is because you're gonna have some, some people that are, that are getting out of second shift, that are gonna be heading home and might wanna grab something to eat on the way back, but six to ten is, is not a problem.
I, I, I think, I think eleven's too late.
Okay.
But six, I, six to ten, and I was thinking about breakfast.
Most of them.
Breakfast could be a wicked good.
No, most of them won't. Most of them terrible will not do breakfast, because they'll turn on and either do luncheon or dinner. That's all they do, they don't do breakfast.
But you might, you might find somebody who decides to make a breakfast burrito or something like that.
That was down the road, Coach.
Yeah. Take care.
That's digestives.
That's a canteen.
I'm traumatized by canteen.
That's the roach coach.
Yep.
But I, I, I don't give.
So you're saying six to ten, the big issue is select.
So, but, but if we have.
Why, why, timeout, what about season here?
I'm perfectly willing, do, that would raise the question, well, from a seasonal point of view, I'm perfectly willing to allow you to be open year round.
No.
That's a business decision that you end up making.
Well, no, hold, hold on.
Especially if you don't.
Let me, let me.
Yeah, that, that's, I think there's a safety issue with this kind of vendor when there's storm aircraft. So I'm kinda thinking that, uh, I don't know, October fifteen to March fifteen or something like that, um.
What about Prelude?
About Cr- Prelude.
I was kidding.
But, see, I, I tend to look at that and I think that, that becomes, uh, the, the business decision that says, okay.
What about, come on, what about, what about parking though? I mean, it, you know, if, 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 if there, there are parking lots and it's gotta be piled around,
Okay.
the, you're gonna have more parking problems, it just, especially if it has street trees.
But that's the issue that the business owner has to face, if he's renting space, let's, let's say, uh, where the guy is right now, okay? And, and he wants to go there year round, he gets a food truck, he comes down here, he, he parks it year round. Every month he takes it home and cleans it up and brings it back. If he wants to do that in February, as long as he clears the parking lot out, I don't have a problem with it. Any more than I would have a problem with a, with a brick and mortar store being open in the month of February. He, he, he wants to open up, he wants to watch his customers slide down Route one. Let him go. I, I really don't have a problem with him being there year round.
You, you know what? I, I, I'm going to, with broad line idea on, on, on the basic premise that they ain't gonna have any customers.
That's right, and they're gonna stay home.
And, and, and it, they're, okay.
That's what I was thinking, I think the economy will take care of it.
The economy will take care of it, if they, if they can be open year round, maybe they'll, maybe they'll switch from selling hot dogs to selling hot chocolate and coffee, you know?
And they put a buzzer on it.
Have a bang up business.
The literature that Ted provided about San Diego said they're very popular in the winter months.
Yeah. Yeah. If I lived in San Diego, they'd be very popular in the winter months. But that's just, that's my thought, I.
I think that will self-regulate.
My idea is self-regulate, but I mean, the only, the only ramification of that is remember that many of these places where we have underutilized or, you know, or, or underutilized properties, that it probably won't have a paved surface, we have any business on a, that goes year round, past that seasonal year mark, they have to have a paved surface, and that's, that's another driver force, that probably would say, well, it's, it's not worth me, it's not worth me to rent it out to you, you know, in, in December, because I gotta pay this parking lot owner.
Oh, I, I, oh, okay, so how, how about between October fifteen and March fifteen, it's allowed only on paved surface?
Well, I think that, in the parking standards, I think you make, I think we should make reference to the standard in the, in that,
Okay.
that whatever other section of the ordinance it is.
And metal regulator, like.
Right.
They'll help regulate it right there, whatever, it's a backdoor regulator. Okay, so reference to the parking section of.
Okay.
And then we, we're willing to allow them seven days a week?
Yeah.
You know, it's something that I just. Oh, okay.
Oh, no, no, Marty's saying, I said, it's like.
Why, why not?
Well, I can't think of a reason I'm asking.
Now, I, I, you know, just, just, you know, England native, do we want to have a later starting date on Sunday? No. England on Sunday or something. I just, I just act like everyone's had a good afternoon.
I mean, we don't do that with other restaurants.
They're fun.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you wanna say after, he opens after church?
I was just.
And they have to go Saturday night back to the.
I thought it was, I thought it was appropriate.
The synagogue.
I thought it was appropriate, it refers to subject.
It's a good thing to do.
You need to look at what sort of beer and wine?
That's the other thing.
Oh, yeah.
Alcohol.
None. I'm not giving alcohol to anybody who has to drive up there and is gonna take alcohol and drive away.
No, no, okay.
This is in Texas.
No, no alcohol and no funny brownies.
That is yet to be concerned by us, remember that.
Right, we have to look at that issue. But when we do look at the issue, we can make that, we, we can say.
Well, actually, right now, it wouldn't hurt to say that right now. No funny brownies.
No alcohol and or marijuana or marijuana products.
Marijuana products or derivatives, let's hallucinate.
Drugs of any type. This isn't you.
I'm sorry.
Is that your grandpa's sense of me?
I'll, I'll have to call Billy and see if I can get a sample.
That's why we're doing a sidewalk.
We're doing a sidewalk.
Are you gonna pick us all up to, to drive us back home?
I'll, I'll be the DD.
After the sidewalk.
I mean, it doesn't need a driver.
We'll spread it a little more to your meat for that.
You can come.
No, it could be the DD.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say, moving in that dural. Maybe not.
Maybe not.
Oh, I'll never forget, yeah, for, for months, no, good, all natural, all natural, all natural, grabbed by the throat. Get me drugs now!
Uh, you guys just go back on nine, what did you guys decide to say?
I thought you were gonna do that breathing stuff.
Ah, shit, be fucked up.
We never, we never answered the last question about lighting. Lighting and design standards.
Oh.
No.
Yeah, no, it was conformed to the, to the, to the standards of the district.
No, okay.
No.
We didn't, we didn't say that, you said that.
I didn't say that.
No, no, you said.
I made a joke about wires, you know, we got.
Fried dough, and that was it, fried dough.
I, I don't, I don't think they, they have to, well, the, i- if, if the lighting standards restrict broadcasting light, yes. If the lighting standards require lighting, no.
Well, they're, they're gonna have lighting angles, they're gonna have lighting on the, on the rest or on the menu, they're gonna have to have that. Right. Lighting emanating from inside.
I don't, yeah, I don't wanna stalk with giant, you know, stalk a giant floodlight.
Yeah, yeah, I'll take a look at what they, what they got in San Diego. Cause it does get dark there.
After about three in the morning, for about ten minutes. Although, I don't know, the last time I was in San Diego, it never got dark.
It's pretty dark.
That city. Yeah, they have more lights out there.
They do. All right, so.
Wow.
I mean, we just wrote.
No, 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 no.
Oh, you know.
Uh, we have to, we have stuff.
Before we get to the milos, you know, we have the schedule of meetings, we got one on the eighth.
We got one on the eighth and one on the twenty second.
Twenty second. So the eighth, we're gonna have workshop on?
Yes, we're, well, we'll have the public hearings and then the workshop.
Okay, 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 and workshop, and I'll be here. On the twenty second.
I'll get you, I'll get that for you, we'll get you.
Yeah, I don't know, we might have time, we might not, I don't, I don't think so. We're gonna need to do a sidewalk for Bill as soon as the, as soon as that consent agreement is executed.
Well, as soon as that consent agreement is executed, he can submit to us.
Well, yeah, I've got the submission, I just haven't given it to you yet because we have a consent agreement.
Okay, so then we'll, we'll have, we'll have a, a, a meeting, and we'll determine whether or not it's complete, and if it is, we'll go for, for a sidewalk, and then we'll go from there. It'll just be the normal process.
When is the, it's? Twenty second.
So that's what you're anticipating?
Yeah, that's what I'm anticipating. Don't forget, in between there is this little meeting on the fourteenth, you guys wanna come to?
Yeah.
The town meeting.
Oh, May or June?
June?
Right.
Oh, no, it is, no, hey, it'll be at night to have a big baseball game, so nobody coming.
Last step up on the gym, the post, and watching similar issues.
Oh, yeah.
Like what?
Tom Hall.
Tom Hall. Tom Hall, the budget, RSU.
Uh, hey, are they gonna, uh, who's up for a, a reveal this year? Or are they gonna just turn up, take it and grin it, and, and don't ask us?
Which review?
Oh, Paimon.
I don't know, I, you know, I haven't even checked that, I gotta check that, thanks for reminding me. Who's up?
It's at seven in the gym, right?
Yeah. I gotta check and see if any of you guys are, uh, you know, I, I think basically what's.
I think Marty was, but I'm not sure about anybody else.
Anybody else?
No, I think so.
Yeah, cause they.
So I think what it boils down to is that, and I don't think we're in a position to start throwing people off the board.
I do like the zoning board of appeals.
There, there's a lot to be attracted to that board, isn't there? I'd like to be sat for that board too, that'd be fun. They don't meet.
I know.
I don't get paid either.
I don't think that's why they don't meet. I think it's because they got a reputation.
Okay.
Right. Sign them ours.
No. No, no.
Oh, uh, Rich.
Yeah.
There. There. I told you we had it before about stall removal.
Oh, yeah, I never got that.
You said we never did.
No, 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 we gave them a space way out in the back.
Yeah, but you said we never did, we had to look them in the database.
The first lines for the chairman. Is that the malar, or is that the, that's a malar?
So that's why I asked you about definition.
amended.
And Sarah said, and she said, well, we don't have it, we don't need it.
That was amended because these guys cut down the.
I, I know we gave them.
No, but I have, uh.
We didn't have a definition, because I asked you this beforehand, about what you want to have a stall on, or.
Or a stall down. And you said, we don't need it, we don't have it. A malar and, uh, and, I want you to get, no, I want you guys to sign the paper copy too.
Can't say anybody didn't say.
Two hundred copies. Why, just told me not to do it?
No, no.
It's like herding cats, isn't it?
Don't be silly, cats are.
But that last, we just, we just basically have other ordinance, performance standard in one night.
How about that?
I guess it's staunch, but we haven't, we haven't, now I gotta write.
Marty, I have a question for you.
Figure Mike on that, yeah.
Okay.
I know. I know.
Welcome, thank you.
I live in the light, it just kind of.
I got the, it's true, it's true.
But I'm a bit of a, that's my opinion.
Right, no, you're right. I grew up down there. It's smart enough to move away.
Well, I didn't too. But mostly because of taxes, we keep that.
I moved away, I went to New York City. Then I came, then I went to Chicago, then I came back.
Oh, and nothing else to report?
Do you have anything to report?
Marty, you got any questions?
Uh, actually, I have a comment before I forget. We still have an open issue about ownership of the buildings at, uh, Mulholland. I talked to the phone person officer about it, and, what's he giving you? He didn't, he does not have an answer. And he wants to talk to the architect, but the owner doesn't want him to talk to the architect. But we're not clear on who the owner is, you know, if you ask the question, who, who is he working for? So, that issue is still open. Well, we can lease it, rent it, I mean, uh, yeah, part of it, the condition we've heard must be to be issued to the lessors, right?
Yep.
I can't be, be hired, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a lease situation, it's an ownership issue, as soon as it's an ownership, the rent of your buildings, it's subdivision. As soon as we're in the subdivision, we haven't gone through a subdivision process.
So, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that I know that there's a problem, I'm simply saying I spoke to the phone person officer, he told me the question could not resolve.
And I, the phone person officer has been out in class for the first half of the week, he was in yesterday, and he's on vacation.
For how long?
One, two, three.
Oh, that's normal, holiday, holiday weekend. No, but you said vacation. Is he gonna be gone two more weeks?
Well, he took today off as a vacation, he only works four days.
Remember, Jared, it's nine forty-five.
Nine forty-one. All right. Did you get that?
And it's on tape.
Do you know that, did we run out of power? I haven't trusted this thing in a while.
All right, so I have mine.
We are still alive.